Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second meeting in October. We have a full agenda, and so we're going to start it off with the city clerk taking role.
May I read the adequate notice?
Oh, sorry, adequate notice. See, we just want to get going here. Let's just move it along. Adequate notice.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the city clerk's office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 3, 2019, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Role call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTiernan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Here.
President Naidoo.
Here.
Okay, to our pledge, I'd like to call upon Claire Toth to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the city clerk's office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed session meeting minutes for October 2, 2019?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any -- okay. Reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Welcome, everyone. Summit's Economic Development Advisory Committee is hosting a community listening session regarding the area adjacent to Ashwood Avenue, Park Avenue, and Broad Street on Tuesday, October 27, from 7:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Summit Community Center, 100 Morris Avenue. Members of the community are invited to share ideas for future growth and enhancements in this area. This will be the first in a series of listening sessions held throughout neighborhoods throughout Summit. The second and final Public Workshop for Proposed Ordinances Restricting the Use of Plastic Bags, Polystyrene, or Styrofoam and Plastic Straws will be held on Thursday, this Thursday, October 17, with two sessions from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Officials will be present to answer questions and obtain input from businesses and restaurants and residents. The ordinances are scheduled to be introduced at the common council meeting on Wednesday, November 6. When ordinances are introduced, there is no opportunity for public comment at that time. The opportunity for public comment will be provided on Monday, November 18, council meeting, before council votes on whether or not to adopt the ordinances. And just to be clear, the workshop or the sessions on Thursday, October 17, will be held at the community center. Residents are needed to serve on city government boards and commissions. You've heard me say many, many times that Summit is the city it is. It's the wonderful place to live and work because of the hundreds of volunteers who work in this city, like everybody up here and many people in the audience. So each November, the members of common council and I review volunteer applications, and we appoint new members. Terms vary from one to five years. It's a great way to get involved in the community, meet new people, and also affect positive change. I hope you will consider volunteering for Summit, and now is the time to submit an application. Go to cityofsummit.org for more information and a list of the volunteer opportunities, as well as the volunteer application, which you can download and then send to City Hall. And lastly, as I've said before, and I will continue to say, 2020 is the United States' census, which we have by the Constitution, we have to do every 10 years. We get one chance a decade to count our population. The census counts every resident in the United States. It is mandated by Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution, and the data collected by the census determines the number of seats each state has in the U.S. House of Representatives, and is also used to distribute the over $765 billion of federal funds to local communities. So if we're underrepresented, we're not going to get the funding that we would maybe have been entitled to, but our needs will still be the same. City staff and members of the community will be actively involved in helping the Census Bureau to get an accurate count in Summit. To that end, the U.S. Census Bureau will be holding a job fair at City Hall in Summit on Wednesday, November 20, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the Witten Community Room upstairs. Interested attendees can apply for paid positions during the job fair, and the jobs are varied, and they range in salary pay from $13 to $31 an hour. So please check the City of Summit website for more information. And again, that date is November 20, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to our city administrator, Michael Rogers. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Important message from our city clerk. If you are not a registered voter, today is your last day. The city clerk's office is open for another hour and 20 minutes. So please, if you're sitting home watching this and you're not registered to vote, hurry up and get here. Halloween is quickly approaching, and the city's Department of Community Programs has organized two spooky hikes that will be held on Saturday evening, October 19, at Martinsburg Park. A less scary hike suitable for younger children will be held from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. A possibly more terrifying hike for all ages will be held, but use your best judgment since participants will be walking through the woods in the dark with actors trying to scare them. Please be advised adult supervision is required for all children in 4th grade or younger on the hikes. Broad Street Garage will be closed on Friday, October 18, at 10:00 p.m. through Sunday, October 20, until 7:00 p.m., and on Friday, October 25, at 10:00 p.m. through Sunday, October 27, until 7:00 p.m. for power washing. Overnight permit holders may park in the Broad Street East Lot adjacent to the garage. Final reminder, it is time for Summit residents to renew your annual permit for parking and transfer station access. Deadline is October 31. Please go to the city website for more information and a link to completing to the annual registration online. Lastly, the next Summit Free Market event will be held on this Saturday, October 19, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the transfer station. Summit residents with a valid transfer station permit are invited to bring yard sale quality items to share and to take whatever they want or need. It's all free. Last weekend, we had an outstanding group of high school, middle school volunteers help run the program, and with hundreds of residents donating material, we hope to have another great Saturday event. So that's all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. And for mine, I will just note that the Summit South Asian community is celebrating Diwali this Friday, so happy Diwali to those who celebrate it. We have one presentation tonight, and that is on the development regulations ordinances revision that has been working on by the planning board and by our city planner Burgess he will discuss it as well. Associates, and we have a member of the firm, Tom Behrens, here to come up and start the So the planning, if those of you who will recall, back in, I guess it was 2016 or maybe presentation. But I do want to acknowledge two members of the zoning board, I mean, I'm sorry, the planning board who are here. Our chair, Bill Anderson, is here, and the vice chair, Jay Brinkerhoff. 2015, we started the master plan process. So we thank you guys for coming in as well. And during the master plan process, it was a very public, inclusive process. So Tom, do you want to come on up and start us off here in the presentation? We got a lot of feedback from the community.
Take your time.
At that time, I was a member also of the planning board, as well as serving on council
Don't worry.
from 2016 onwards.
We're not going anywhere.
And during 2016, we finalized the master plan process, and the result of which was there was a document that had a series of recommendations and ideas for how this community should develop for the next 10 years. And those of us who were sitting on the planning board at that time thought to ourselves and discussed this, which was essentially, well, we don't want this to be a document that, like many documents, end up being done and put away on the shelf, and nobody ever thinks about it ever again. What we want is to have things from there to be actionable and to make actual changes that the public had wanted through the master plan process. And so the idea from there germinated to looking at the development of regulations and ordinances that we have in the city and trying to make them now consistent with the goals that people had laid out as to where they wanted the city to go. So now with that brief little interlude and introduction, Tom, you ready to go?
I am.
Okay.
And thank you for the introduction. Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Behrens. As was mentioned, I'm a planner with Burgess Associates. Our firm was retained to prepare a new land use ordinance for the city. The task, as I understand, it was essentially to streamline and modernize existing development regulations ordinance and implement the 2016 master plan goals and objectives, as was just mentioned. The development regulations ordinance itself generally sets forth the administrative procedures for development review, including board duties and powers, and regulates uses and physical development within the city. The last comprehensive development ordinance was adopted on December 2, 2003, which is about 16 years ago. The world has changed quite a bit since then. Just to go back in time a bit, George W. Bush was serving his first term in office. We were about four years from entering the Great Recession, which is significant in this context, given the changes that have occurred to land use since then. Pirates of the Caribbean was a blockbuster hit at the time, and Facebook would launch the following year. So given the changes in our society, market trends and preferences, it's been determined by the city that there's a need for reviewing and updating its development regulations. So tonight, I just wanted to give a presentation to go over the process in terms of implementing the ordinance and some notable changes moving forward in advance of hopefully adopting the ordinance on November 6 of this year. To date, we have gotten a significant amount of feedback. We held a number of stakeholder meetings with local engineers, architects, developers, real estate experts. At about three stakeholder meetings early on in the process, we've had a subcommittee meeting, or subcommittee, rather, with members of the planning board. We've met with the planning board on several occasions. We've discussed some of the issues with Council President Naidoo, the Council on the Box. And we've also gotten input from the city staff, and in general, I've just poured over every word and phrase to try to get this through. So with that, the municipal land use law recognizes that municipalities change over time, and as such, the MLUL requires a recommendation, or reexamination, rather, of the master plan at least every 10 years. The master plan establishes the land use policies, goals, and objectives. The zoning ordinance implements the master plan with specific use and development regulations. The municipal land use law establishes the process in implementing a zoning ordinance, which begins with the adoption of a master plan, which the city undertook in 2016. The next step would be the planning board preparing a draft ordinance, which we've been working on a draft, and the board plans to review on October 28. The planning board then will refer the ordinance to the governing body. The introduction of the ordinance by the governing body would be the next step, and then it is referred back to the planning board for a master plan consistency review, and then the governing body will finally adopt the ordinance, and the regulations will become law. In terms of the schedule moving forward, as I mentioned, the planning board will review the draft ordinance on October 28. The governing body will introduce the ordinance on November 6. The planning board will conduct its master plan consistency review on November 25, and the governing body will adopt the ordinance, will hopefully adopt the ordinance, on December 3. That's the game. So in working on the regulations and updating the regulations, we've been guided by a number of principles, including probably most significantly, the implementation of the 2016 master plan revision. The zoning board has also given us some comments in its annual report about significant issues or issues that have come up time and time again that they'd like us to review and incorporate into the ordinance. Again, the effort is to streamline and modernize the existing ordinance, create regulations that strengthen local assets, address emerging land use issues, refine and expand upon existing design criteria, and promote sustainable development, among other principles. The 2016 master plan revision has six primary goals, including goal number one, to guide development, to maintain and enhance the character of Summit; goal two, to maintain a dynamic and vibrant city; goal three, to improve connectivity between people and places to promote a healthy and vibrant community; goal four, to promote a city that is welcoming to residents of all ages, races, ethnicities, abilities, and income ranges; and goal five, to build economic resiliency by supporting reinvestment; and goal six, preserve and enhance natural beauty, open space, and community facility assets for future generations. So I'm not going to list all these specific objectives that we're advancing, but I'll go over a few that go beyond those six primary goals. They include the objective of strengthening design standards and guidelines, which has been an emphasis of this effort, protecting existing sites that are of historic value to preserve the city's historic character, maintain the prevailing character of neighborhoods, promote clear, user-friendly, and transparent application, review, and public hearing process for development proposals and applications. And just a few more to promote mixed use and residential development downtown, develop consistent facades, storefront, and signage standards and guidelines, and encourage low-impact development and green technologies in all new and existing buildings, infrastructure, and capital projects. As I mentioned, our effort in part was to streamline the ordinance. So as proposed, we've reorganized the ordinance into five main parts with a number of appendices, and the structure itself is intended to consolidate existing sections of the ordinance. We kept what works, and there is a lot of what works. There's a good system, but we thought we could expand upon it. We eliminated what doesn't work, and we refined and expanded other sections as needed. So Part 1, general provisions and administration, basically gets into the administration of the development review process, and again, planning board and zoning board powers and duties. The zoning generally covers all of the use and physical regulations of the city. Stormwater management and drainage covers most of the engineering aspects of the ordinance. Environmentally sensitive areas talks about steep slopes, floodplain regulations, and wetlands, and then we have stored preservation. And the appendix will include the zoning map, application checklists, use and bulk schedules, and some design guidelines. And again, in the effort to streamline the ordinance, we've addressed inconsistencies, clarified language, consolidated related provisions as needed, review the applicability of current regulations, remedy flawed provisions, and in general, tried to make it more user-friendly so that people could review it and know what to do without having too much, to do too much bouncing around. With regard to strengthening local assets, we've reviewed every single zone and tried to expand upon the list of permitted uses in each zone. Over on the right, you'll see a picture of a brewery. I think it's been determined that uses like this, including wineries, microbreweries, and uses that have a little more entertainment value or desire in the city, in appropriate locations, of course, and other uses that aren't currently permitted include self-storage and urgent care, for example. We also intend to promote economic development, design criteria to protect and enhance the character of the city, prevent demolition of the city's about 30-something historic landmarks, encourage green building best practices to conserve energy, water, and materials, reduce runoff, mitigate the urban heat island effect, and decrease carbon emissions, among other goals. In terms of addressing emerging land uses, just for example, we've addressed definitions and standards for new uses. Again, we've included new permitted uses. We've tried to address rooftop amenities and uses as they seem to be gaining in popularity, and again, green building strategies, standards, and incentives. And below, you'll see a building that was recently constructed at 40 Beechwood Avenue, which includes rooftop amenities and is an office building. It is one of the newest buildings in the city. Based on the stakeholder meetings that I mentioned earlier and input from the community in general, but also from architects and design professionals, there was a desire to create some level of flexibility in terms of improving single-family homes in certain districts, and specifically those in the R-25 and R-43 zones, which tend to have some larger and taller homes and can't necessarily adhere to, let's say, the height limitations, for instance, within the zone. So one of the ideas was to increase the permitted height to a maximum, you know, slightly above the maximum permitted height, with the caveat of having a minimum roof pitch. This way, design would be able to be achieved, but in a way that would also give those homeowners flexibility to do something that was consistent with what exists on the property and within the neighborhood. And in all zones, we propose that additions may match existing roof lines based on, again, you know, with limitation based on feedback from the design community. Some other design parameters specific to single-family, two-family homes include flat roofs limited to 20% of what we're calling lower-tier roofs, as you can see on the picture on the left, essentially a one-story portion or that area, less than the main roof or the highest point of the roof, and that all roofs in the R-zones primarily would have a minimum roof pitch of about 612, or at least 80% of the roof coverage. And the idea would be to discourage a more modern type of home, which you could see on the right, which, I mean, designed subjectively, some might think that that is an attractive home, not saying that it's not, but if you were to ask someone if that matches the character of Summit as it is today, one might think that it may not. So these provisions are intended to address that and, again, encourage development that is consistent with the existing housing stock. Another provision, though it may sound simple, is requiring the primary entrance to dwellings on the street that contains the street's address. And again, it's just to establish uniformity and be consistent with the existing character of the city. One issue that's come up is to discourage essentially garages taking over the front or the character of the home in general, and you could see two examples, one where sort of a snout design, as it's referred to, where the garage projects way in front of the existing front plane of the house and basically takes over and establishes itself as the predominant feature of the dwelling. And on the other side, you see another, not a front-oriented garage, but a side-oriented garage, which establishes basically a parking courtyard in the front, which encourages impervious coverage in the front yard, and again, takes away from the character of the home, which would tend to be inconsistent with the city's current housing stock. Here's a local example that does have a front-facing garage, which does project a bit in front of the house, but seems to meet the objectives of the city from a design perspective. And so we've tried to tailor the design requirements to allow for some level of projection, but in a way that can be done that, again, meets the design goals of the city and can be done in a way that's consistent with the character of the neighborhoods in the city. This is another example of a front-facing garage. What we've proposed is to increase the allowance for where front-facing garages can be permitted. Currently, they're only permitted on lots up to 75 feet in width. We're proposing that that be increased to 90 feet, and what that does is now include homes in the R-10 zone, which have a minimum lot width of 75 feet. So again, it's not 90 feet, it's lots less than 90 feet. The R-15 zone requires lots of minimally 90 feet. So it would be the R-10 zone and zones with smaller lot conditions typically. And there would be a maximum of a two-car garage limit and a maximum width of 24 feet, again, to avoid having the garage become the dominant feature of the home as observed from the street. We did address design requirements for other types of homes. I'm just not going to get into the details tonight for townhouses, multifamily development, mixed-use development, non-residential development, and supplementary regulations by zone, as warranted. These design requirements, just in generalities, include building mass and form, fenestration, storefronts, building articulation, parking structures, and signs. With regard to sustainability, which I understand the city's been trying to emphasize and was addressed pretty significantly in the master plan, so we've tried to incorporate that the best we could into the zoning ordinance, and again, in an effort to modernize the ordinance. So we've taken a multifaceted approach, which includes the removal of barriers from implementation, create standards and definitions for green building strategies, and create development bonus incentives for green building strategies. So in terms of removing barriers, we're now permitting green building technology as permitted accessory uses where, for example, solar panels are not permitted today. So pending on where they're proposed, they may require barriers. We're trying to make it an easier process for people to incorporate these types of technologies. Green roofs would be another type of technology, and having standards for these individual strategies. So just to go over a few of them, we have electrical vehicle charging stations, which there's a retail component where basically people will take or occupy a few parking spaces in, let's say, a commercial lot, a Target. I know there's no Target in Summit, but they might occupy six to 10 spaces and actually charge people to come and use those as an accessory component of, you know, the primary user of the site. We're also encouraging or acquiring a certain number of electrical vehicle charging stations on most, if not all, non-residential sites, and also providing parameters for residential and mixed-use development. Solar panel systems would be another strategy, and we've created standards for solar canopies, so those that you see above parking areas, above walkways that are generally projected, not projected, but create sort of a roof or a canopy, as the term implies. Standards for flat roofs, sloped roofs such as single-family homes, and ground-mounted panels, which would be limited to certain zones where space would allow. We're requiring reflective roofing in certain zones on flat roofs. You can see a picture of what's referred to as a cool roof, and basically has a lot to do with the color in that it's of a reflective quality that, instead of absorbing the heat, it essentially reflects the heat. And if you have a number of buildings that do this, you can substantially reduce what's known as the urban heat island effect, which tends to, as the image on the left indicates, downtown and urban areas tend to absorb more heat and generate more heat, or typically have higher temperatures than surrounding areas in the summer months. Another strategy would be green stormwater infrastructure, so basically creating planting systems around parking areas to absorb water and reduce runoff, and we're, again, we've created standards for this type of strategy. And green roofs would be another one. So these are roofs that almost function like the ground in terms of that they absorb and hold the water, as opposed to just running down a downspout and entering the city's stormwater drain. and mixed-use development. Solar panel systems would be another strategy, and we've created standards for solar canopies, so those that you see above parking areas, above walkways that are generally projected, not projected, but create sort of a roof or a canopy, as the term implies. Standards for flat roofs, sloped roofs such as single-family homes, and ground-mounted panels, which would be limited to certain zones where space would allow. We're requiring reflective roofing in certain zones on flat roofs. You can see a picture of what's referred to as a cool roof, and basically has a lot to do with the color in that it's of a reflective quality that, instead of absorbing the heat, it essentially reflects the heat. And if you have a number of buildings that do this, you can substantially reduce what's known as the urban heat island effect, which tends to, as the image on the left indicates, downtown and urban areas tend to absorb more heat and generate more heat, or typically have higher temperatures than surrounding areas in the summer months. Another strategy would be green stormwater infrastructure, so basically creating planting systems around parking areas to absorb water and reduce runoff. And we're, again, we've created standards for this type of strategy. And green roofs would be another one. So these are roofs that almost function like the ground in terms of that they absorb and hold the water, as opposed to just running down a downspout and entering the city's stormwater In terms of sustainable bonus incentives, we have a few approaches to this, and based on our research, what many municipalities use as a standard are lead standards or equivalent. And they have four different levels, as shown, I don't want to say the easiest to achieve, but the one that requires the fewest points is the certified level, which requires forty to forty-nine points. We're focusing more on the silver, gold, and platinum levels. So the idea would be that if you were to achieve one of those levels and demonstrate that, that you would have some type of bonus, whether it be an FAR, floor area ratio bonus, density bonus, or perhaps, in the case of platinum, maybe even a high bonus of a story, depending on the location. And the thought, as we've discussed with members of the planning board internally, was to have a flexible process where a developer may not necessarily be granted a certain incentive, but that there would be flexibility that would match the type of the program or strategy that was being offered, with a cap. And just to cover a few other bonus incentives, they include measures for recycling, reusing water, green stormwater infrastructure, installing solid panels, green roofs, reduced energy consumption. And in Cranford, they have a strategy where developers can basically offer or request an incentive. That seemed to be like an interesting approach, where, again, if the developer can demonstrate that the bonus being requested, that's tailored to the specific project, adheres to a certain goal or strategy, that that might be something worth entertaining. So again, tonight, my intent was to go over the process and just hit some highlights of what we've tried to address and some of the major changes in the ordinance. The ordinance itself is a living document intended to evolve over time, and we do recommend that after it is adopted, that the city in general just conducts some sort of review just to make sure it stays on track, to address anything that needs to be addressed.
Thank you very much, Tom. Just wait there because we'll take questions from members of council, then I'll open it up to the public if they have questions and if there's any further discussion by members of council with you. I just also want to just acknowledge that, obviously, there's been, you know, people in the city staff that have been involved in this process, Paul, Aaron, Rick, all those guys have been.
Chris.
Krista. Everybody's been really involved. This has been a very intensive process. And then, of course, there's the, all the other members of the planning board who have been involved in this process. I mean, this has evolved over the last two years, and so there's been a lot of people who have given their input to it. So thank you to everyone for all their hard work in getting us to where we are today. As you said, you know, this is, in a way, looking at something that's kind of been there for sixteen years, they've been adding on. And one of the biggest complaints that people had is, you know, this is a document, as it was, sometimes hard to follow, sometimes inconsistent, required a lot of effort. We're trying to make sure that people get a document at the end of the day that's easier to understand. Obviously, there's some rules and regulations that are just what they are, they're state mandated, and they're written the way that they are, but trying to do that. And the other aspect that I think is important, as you highlighted here, is the design and the sustainability elements that are not currently there in the document, but that will be, hopefully, in the future documents, because those were key elements of what the master plan processes, my recollection, of both on the planning board as well as sitting in the workshops that people in this town wanted. And since we had a lot of public input, we know this is something that's derived from not simply a few people and sitting in a room, but rather a community-wide effort. So thanks to all of you guys for all the hard work. With that, I'm going to open it up to members of council who want to have specific questions of the mayor. Anybody? Before I ask the public. Everybody's silent here. Okay. Maybe if there's people in the public that want to ask questions, we can then see if members of council have other questions to ask. Anybody from the public want to start us up? Wow, okay. Claire, come on up. Yeah, there you go.
Hi, Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, eleven Sunset Drive. I'll note that I sit on both the Historic Preservation Commission and Summit Downtown, neither of which was invited to be involved in this process. So I am curious about additional opportunities for public input on this, and when, or is this document going to be publicly available so that we can review it and comment on it well in advance of the December adoption meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Okay, so either Tom or Bill, one of you guys want to address those.
I'll take a stab at it. With regard to historic preservation, it's an issue that I think the city's still working through. We do intend to include a provision that prohibits demolition of landmarks while the city is working through that. And as I mentioned, we have a section in the ordinance specifically dedicated to historic preservation. So I think in the near future, probably in the coming months, we can resolve and have an ordinance specifically tailored to whatever is agreed upon in terms of historic preservation. And in terms of when a draft can become available, we are discussing what we'll call sort of a final draft with the planning board on October 28th. The ordinance is being introduced on November 6th, so, I mean, maybe sometime after introduction or at introduction. It could be made possibly sooner, depending on input received from the planning board.
But you have had, my mistaken, and Marjorie, you said on the planning board, but my recollection is that you guys have had public discussion of components of this document, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Why don't you explain what, a little bit more?
Well, we've had, I think probably Bill can do a better job of it, because I've only been on the planning board for this calendar year. But we've had a number of discussions at meetings of different sections, and in our last meeting, we dedicated the entire meeting to a discussion of all the various provisions and the concerns that different members of the planning board had with provisions of the document. So I think there's certainly been an opportunity for the public to speak up in that regard and also to hear the discussion.
Great, okay. Bill, do you want to come up?
Yeah, please jump in if I miss something, Bill.
Hello, Anderson, twenty-two Cromwell Parkway, Summit High School, classes sixty-nine. Planning Board Chair. With regard to historic preservation, we met with Melissa a number of times, and Tom has been involved. It became complicated and more detailed, and we felt we really wanted to spend the proper amount of time on it and didn't want to sort of jam us through this process. We felt that the zoning aspects of it were so outdated that they need to be moved forward. So we said the best thing to do is to take the time we need with historic preservation and get it right. But one of the things that we did want to address with regard to historic preservation was the fact that there, essentially, there's no virtual review of any of the thirty-five or thirty-eight historic buildings that are mentioned in the 2004 Historic Preservation Report still left available. And one essentially can, I guess, apply for a permit, knock it down, and there's no review or anything to deal with that. So one of the things that we will have in this document will be some review required with regard to tearing down existing historic structures. And then we need to take more time with the other aspects of historic preservation, you know, to make sure we get the details correct on that.
And let me just add about the point about the demolition and having a review of the historic preservation, I mean, buildings that are on the list of historic buildings. This was something that the Historic Preservation Committee, when they came to council back the last year, was one of their primary things that they wanted us, as council, to address, because the concern was that you, there was no, there's nothing right now, that if you have a building that's listed on what is the Historical Registry, if you will, of Summit, if you wanted to go ahead, there is no, you don't need a variance, if you don't need to go before the zoning board or the planning board for some reason, you just want to knock it down, there is no review process. And I think this is one of those things that addresses one of the concerns that Historic Preservation Committee had from last year's discussion. So thank you, Bill. The other point that Claire made, and I wanted this addressed as well, if you could, is downtown, SDI. Most of this stuff, as far as downtown, is not going to make an impact, right? I mean, we already have a fully built downtown. Is it going to make a significant impact?
I don't know if it'll impact the function of the SDI per se. I mean, we are refining the requirements of the CRBD and surround, I mean, the entire city, for that matter. But we are implementing the 2016 master plan, which I believe had significant input from community and variety of committees and public participation.
And stakeholders, including SDI.
Stakeholders, correct.
Nora.
And I think with SDI's input, in earlier this year, council approved a revised ordinance regarding permitted uses on the ground floor.
Correct.
And that was, we did that before we got the DRO, because within SDI's input, we wanted to enact that sooner rather than later, rather than waiting for this whole DRO process. So SDI's input has been taken account of.
Thank you, Nora. Anybody else have public comments or questions? Okay, any now members of council, maybe this is stimulated, but if not, it's fine, we're going to have another chance at this, to look at this in detail when the documents come in front of us. The planning board, I would encourage people who are interested in this, who haven't had a chance, as Councilwoman Fox said, the planning board has discussed a lot of this in detail for many, many hours. And those are on Hometown TV in the archive, so if you want to watch, you can get a flavor of all the back and forth, because there is a lot of different opinions that a document like this. And one of the things, I think, I will say about my former colleagues on the planning board, none of them are shy to express their opinions, and they have a variety of opinions. And so when you have the planning board come to a consensus for a document, that's one of the good things about the planning board, you have a lot of people who are very smart and intelligent, who have ideas, but when they come together from a variety of perspectives, you know you have a pretty good sense of where the community is. So thank you to them, thank you to our city staff, thank you, Tom. And with that, oh, wait, oh, wait, Mike, after my entire wrap-up?
Your comments stimulated the brain cells.
Okay, fine, there you go.
No, I just wouldn't, just listening to the commentary, I guess I just, I am very much looking forward to looking through the document and our discussion about it in a couple of weeks. But I guess one of the things, just based off what you said, I, maybe you can clarify a little bit, or perhaps it'll be in the document, but this idea of these trade-offs for possibly, I guess my bigger focus would be on density, for instance, versus adding these green elements, I suppose. The place where that's mostly going to happen, I would assume, would be in the downtown area, because that's where, you know, we have, you know, or perhaps I'm wrong, but where we're thinking about development and adding density. I guess my concern is, is obviously, I completely agree with what Council President Naidoo said, that the master plan had, you know, a lot of people talking about these initiatives. But on the flip side, I got loud and clear that we don't want to change the character of the downtown. We don't want this to be, I'm sorry, Michael, a Morristown, for instance.
I completely agree with you.
Yeah, so I guess I worry, whenever we add some of this horse-trading ability, whether, you know, we might, you know, for some, I guess, goal, we lose sight of the forest, I guess. And so I'm very much interested to hear how that process is going to be and how people will weigh that, because I do think, you know, we have to understand, like, people love our downtown, we love the look of it, and we talk about this all the time when we're talking about the Broad Street West. You know, developers want density, I get it, but there's a lot of reasons why maybe others may not feel the same way.
Well said, and I appreciate that. And I probably should have clarified a few points about that. One would be that these incentives would not be applicable to single and two-family homes, so you wouldn't be able to build a bigger house because you put up solid panels. I mean, you would have other types of savings and be commended for that, but you wouldn't be able, entitled to have a bigger house. The CRBD certainly would be a focus. In terms of an incentive for the CRBD, I think they don't actually have a density parameter, but there are other bulk standards, for instance, like coverage, height's another one. I understand there's also sensitivity about going above and beyond the three stories. So the thought was that, except in perhaps an exceptional circumstance, like a one-hundred-point platinum lead-rated project, that maybe that would be an occasion to go up to four stories, maybe. But we would look to other bulk parameters other than density, including FAR and improved lot coverage in terms of how to incentivize that type of development. The incentives would be applicable to other, let's say, multifamily and non-residential zones, so like the LI zone, for instance, they might get some more FAR there, for instance. Density wouldn't apply because it would be a non-residential type of development. And so I completely agree that the bonus would have to be consistent with the type of strategy and the level that's being provided. We've discussed on a preliminary basis what those incentives should be, but I think we'll get into it and try to finalize it at the planning board meeting, as it's been an evolving topic.
Tom, can I, let me just follow up these questions, just so we have a more specific answer. When you say that there's these bonuses, does that automatically kick in, or is there some review process by some board or council that then would make a determination that, okay, you got to, let's say, platinum lead, in exchange for that, we will give you this? Is this an automatic system, or is there some kind of review process, which goes to Councilwoman McTirrenan's point, because you may say, wow, that's great, you have this, but that just, that building looks totally out of character, it looks different, whatever, and you weigh those equities, if you will, about it?
Sure. So there's two ways to go about it. So one would be the absolute way, that if you achieve platinum, you get ten extra units per acre. I think the desire and the feedback that we've gotten is to have a flexible review process where the reviewing entity, such as the planning board, would determine that the bonus is appropriate. So that's the approach that we're taking. So to give you an example, let's say if a building in the MF zone, the multifamily zone, achieved a silver rating, they might get a density of up to 2.5 units per acre, which would be at the discretion of the reviewing entity.
Okay, thank you.
So there'd be a range.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay. With that, thank you, Tom, thank you. And we will move on to our section dealing with public comments. So public comments is that period of time when folks in the audience who have comments about topics that are not on the agenda, come up, give your name, where you live, and your comment or question, and start it off, as soon as Tom moves out so I can see, folks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom, very much. Okay, anyone have public comments? Come on up, Chris. Chris and Chris. Christopher and Chris.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Harrison, H-A-R-R-I-S-O-N, at forty-one Ashland Road.
Christine Lejoy, L-I-J-O-Y, one-twenty-four Canoe Brook Parkway.
So it's interesting that we're talking about buildings tonight. Our concern is with the Summit Free Market Building. That is, we're in the midst of our fall two weekends. We just had one last weekend, and as Mr. Rogers had mentioned, that our next event is this weekend, and we have many citizens that are asking us about the permanent structure that we've been working on over the last several years. And we're just concerned as to the progress of this and where we stand. Last I'd heard was we were being held back because of pile driving needed to be completed before the structure could be put up, and that that may or may not happen. So we're wondering when it's going to happen.
What's the status? Yes, okay. So I will, so for those of you who don't know, I sit on the Summit Conservancy Board as an officer. And just so that folks who are not aware, why is he referring to the Summit Conservancy? The free market is a building, as a permanent building, there's an agreement between the City of Summit and the Summit Conservancy, for the Summit Conservancy to construct the free market, the City of Summit. This is an agreement, I think, that we entered into, whether it was earlier this year or late last year. This year, this year, right, this year.
Late last year.
Late last year, one of those, during that period of time, but late last year or late this year, doesn't matter. But essentially, what it does is about three-quarters of the cost is going to be borne by the Conservancy, quarter of the cost, whether in-kind or actual monetary donation, is through quarter of the cost, whether in-kind or actual monetary donation, is through the City of Summit. And first of all, the free market, as we've discussed many, many times, is an extremely important project for the residents of the City of Summit because it is a triple win. It is a triple win because it helps to reduce the amount of waste that goes into our waste stream, so it is good for the environment. Fellow Summit residents and only Summit residents benefit from taking stuff that other people in our community want to let go, and so there are people who need those things, whether they're toys or articles of furniture, it's everything under the sun except for textiles.
Correct.
That people benefit from. And it is a benefit for taxpayers because it reduces the tipping fees that the city has to pay for waste that has to otherwise be disposed of. That's why this project is really important to get completed. As mentioned, there is an issue with trying to get it constructed because we need, we have, the land on which it is going to be constructed is not owned by the City of Summit, it is leased to the City of Summit through Union County. Certain portions of that land are subject to green acres. So there's only a certain portion of that land that is usable for recycling purposes, which the free market, as I just described to you, is part of that recycling type of effort. There was an agreement with the county that needed to be hammered out, which took many years, frankly, to get done, and which designates a certain area for it. That area unfortunately has the need to do piles. We have been involved in the Summit Conservancy in trying to get a company to do the pile work. And it's taken us longer, certainly, than any of us wanted, could have expected. Part of it was that the weather has not cooperated. Part of it is that there are very, very few pile companies that do work and that would do work on a project such as ours because of the scale we're talking about, and who do work in this area. So that limits our playing field. Having said all of that, what I'm going to do actually is ask Bill Anderson to come up, who's a fellow board member of the Summit Conservancy, who has actually been involved in trying to figure out what we do with a pile contractor. Bill, why don't you come on up?
I put on another hat today, right now, for Summit Conservancy.
Bill, it's talking to Mike, so people.
We became reliant on one particular pile-driving contractor, which is holding up the process. They promised us they would do the work and they would do it at a favorable rate. They've become very busy and basically backed out of that commitment. So we've had to go back to the marketplace and talk to other pile-driving contractors. It's not like there's a lot of them out there that do this scale of work, which is sort of what we've learned. We now have three proposals we're expecting by the end of this week from three different contractors, that will hopefully we'll be able to get them under contract and get started. The economy is very strong, the real estate business is strong, these people are very busy. This is not a big project, if you're thinking about building office buildings in Manhattan and elsewhere, so it's hard to get their attention. We have done all kinds of things, like tell them what a wonderful project it is and how great it would be on their website to show this great project, and a sustainable project they've been involved in, and I've even used my company's leverage to say, well, introduce you to our construction guys. So we're working every angle we can to try to get them to produce three bids, and we hope to have them by the end of this week and select one and go forward. We're all kind of frustrated by the time that this is taken, actually.
I hope that answers. I know it's very, believe you me, I think those of you who know me know, and know my involvement with this project, know how frustrated I am personally in this. This has been excruciating at virtually every state of getting us to where we are. Having said that, as I said, this is such an important project for the community when it is done, and it makes such a big difference. There are very, very few things, as community projects, that I believe that we do that have a really tangible impact on many people's lives. And those who work at the free market, like Christopher and Chris, know this, and they've done this for years on, and they can actually, you can actually see how much people appreciate what is being done, because it really makes a huge difference. I don't, I think Summit has a reputation, that, you know, of a certain type of community, that everyone here is affluent or what have you. It's not the case. We have an extremely diverse community, with a lot of people who struggle every day to get by. And the fact of the matter is, this free market makes a huge difference in their lives. So we commend all the students, we commend all their mentors, all their years of doing this hard work, and we need to get this building built, and we will get it built. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. With that, oh yes, come on up, sir.
Sorry, they have a block of people. Don't get nervous, it's only show in town.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Gary White, W-H-Y-T-E, and I reside at 289 Old Tote Road in Mountainside. What brings me here tonight is I started something back in 2001, really 2002, sorry. 2001, I was invited to a friend-razor in Summit for a introduction of a very, very rare disease called fibrodysplasia ossifacans progresever, or FOP. And FOP is a disease where if a child were to hurt or damage a muscle tendon or ligament, it doesn't heal, it turns to bone. And essentially, the bone just grows in the body until it fuses with existing bone, and the child develops malformation of their skeletal frame, and end result is the formation of a second skeleton in their body. And so after hearing Dr. Kaplan speak about FOP at this friend-razor in Summit back in 2001, I came up with two, I was so moved by hearing him talk about this disease that I, that I, I did two things. In 2002, I started a fundraiser for the FOP Research Lab at UPenn, University of Pennsylvania, and I just had my 18th annual fundraiser for FOP back on February 23rd of this year. The second thing I started, which brings me here tonight, is having attended one of my own town meetings in, in Mountainside, I saw how much a proclamation or a resolution was doing for awareness. Newspapers covered a story, or the local television covered it. And so with the help of my nine-year-old son at the time, Eric, we wrote a letter to all 21 mayors in Union County, told them about FOP, and asked if they would consider adopting a proclamation or a resolution. So as that progressed, we expanded it to all 568, 66, 566 municipalities, and all 21 freeholder boards, and also the 50 governors. So, all 21 freeholder boards have adopted a proclamation or a resolution to date. As I said, this started in 2002. We have right now, this is one of two books, and the little marker in the book shows the Union County section. We have 568 resolutions or proclamations urging continued awareness about this horrific disease. And the reason why it's over 566 is because four towns have changed name. And so I was fortunate enough to get a proclamation or resolution from the original name and the new town. Two towns in New Jersey, oh, let me backtrack a minute. Summit, the City of Summit, was the, out of 568 proclamations, resolutions to date, Summit was the 17th municipality to support this with your proclamation that I have right Two municipalities will not, under any circumstances, they told me, support our request for a proclamation or a resolution. One being Harding Township in Morris County, and the other being Walpak Township in Sussex County. So what I did was, when I started this in Union County, I decided to go full circle in Union County. You're the 16th town I've visited since about three months ago I started. And I've been asking for support, if you would consider writing a letter, because a young girl lived in Union County who had this disease, she's no longer here. But out of the 16 towns in Union County that I visit, I think there are about 11 towns that have sent, mayors have agreed to send a letter to these two mayors, which I have their contact information in here. And my request is, I was wondering if the City of Summit would consider something.
I'll certainly think about it, but honestly, we've already, when was the Summit proclamation given?
January 24th of 2003.
Okay. I'm not inclined, frankly, to pressure another mayor to do something, but I'll take it and read it and think about it.
Okay. Thank you. And the only reason I'm, I don't like the word pressure, but the only reason I'm doing this is because there's a congressman in South Jersey who was a mayor, was an assemblyman, was a senator, and now he's a congressman. And he, he has followed me throughout the last 18 years, and his staff is looking at having these two books put in the Library of Congress. And I personally, I feel, I would feel terrible if we didn't have the support of 100% of the municipalities in New Jersey, and so that's why I'm doing a last appeal.
Okay.
So could I leave this with someone?
Yes.
Yeah, sure, please give it to the city clerk.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming and speaking about it and sharing information about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. Is there anyone else who has something to discuss as far as the public comment? Okay, with that, I will consider the public comment period over. We're moving on to ordinances for hearing. We have one ordinance for hearing, it's a community program. It's 19-3200. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of that ordinance?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, Subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas, and add a new subsection, 7-25.2A, Electric Vehicle Charging Stations.
Councilwoman Goot.
This ordinance is to establish the two parking spots in the DeForest lot, to take away from the spots that are there, to put the EV spots in with the charging stations, and I'm going to set up the fee schedule.
Okay. Do I, so move the ordinance for hearing, do I hear? Second. Thank you. Okay, so now the hearing is open. Do I have any comments from members of council? Councilwoman Little?
I was just hoping that we could talk a little bit about the logistics of how these fees work, and how, if you're going into the DeForest lot, maybe Rita could answer. If you're going into the DeForest lot, do you still get the same parking ticket, are you responsible for the same fees when you enter and leave the parking lot, and then you pay the charging station as well? And how does the, the fee that occurs after your, your vehicle's fully charged and then the extra, you know, how does that all, how does, if you could just go through the process and help me understand how that all works?
Yeah, just, let's assume that somebody drives in with an electric vehicle, the port is there, what happens?
Yes.
Rita McDaniel, Parking Services Manager, good evening, all. What happens is, is they will pull a ticket, just like any other parker coming into the DeForest lot, lot number one we're speaking of. What will happen then is all of the fees, whether they're actually charging fees for the cost of electricity and parking fees, everything will be charged through the charging station. It was easier that way because this allows us to actually charge 24/7, seven days a week. Currently, lot one, the parking fee stop at 6:00 PM, at 10:00 PM, the gates go up. However, we wanted the mechanism for people to be able to use it, coming off any highway, coming into Summit at any point in time, any day, be able to charge. So the easy way with ChargePoint is we can set up the fees, charging fees for electricity, the parking fees. The parking fees are the same as what the DeForest lots currently are, but there are different actual charging fees for the electricity. With our research, we reached out to a lot of towns, and City Attorney helped me get a variety of ordinances, I think there was about 20 of them, that we looked through. Based upon comparing that to similar communities, we compared to Morristown, Princeton, and Rutherford. Some towns strictly do a parking charge. Currently, there was one town that wasn't charging anything, they just introduced an ordinance to start charging. So again, it's not to have a revenue maker, but to cover costs and to cover the parking. So again, someone pulls in, they do get their ticket, but they go to the charging station. Depending upon how much of a charge they need, it could be one hour, two hour, three hour, four hour, it's a four-hour max charging point. It's a dual port, so there'll be two spaces with essentially two charging hoses. Then, once the charging is completed, the person will get a text message that their charging is done. The clock starts then again, too. They get, have 15 minutes to come and take their car, then the parking, charging fee stop, and the parking fee stop. And then they just would exit the parking lot by hitting the intercom. We will be able to see these transaction lines within the office, and we will let them out of the gate. They won't have to pay any more fees. If they stay there and ignore the text message, the parking continues. The charging fee stops, but the parking continues because they're taking up a space from another electric vehicle being able to come in and charge. And this is what I found through the research that most towns do, especially Morristown, people just leave their cars there. I mean, we have it, that's why up to five hours in DeForest, we charge $50, because we want people to move their car and have the turnover. So with the ease of them having to have their own app with ChargePoint, or they can call it 800 number and give a credit card over the phone, everything is going through ChargePoint. And then we would collect the revenues on a monthly basis. ChargePoint takes 10% of the revenues. But there is the charging fee for the electric and the parking fee. Now, we also have in this ordinance the ability to ticket someone after they get the 15-minute text and leave their car there. However, we don't have officers, and I don't think that we should enlist the police going out and giving parking tickets if someone's there at 10 o'clock at night. However, we could, cities, you know, parking officers could do that. There's usually an ambassador in lot one at all times, that's another reason why I picked lot one, so that we can monitor this on a daily basis, see how it works. But again, if someone is there over five hours besides the charging and the parking fees, then they can be charged. If that car is there for five hours, they can be charged for $50, just like any other parker in the DeForest lots. So again, we wanted to keep it the same, but we also wanted the ability that at any point in time, someone in Summit, let's say, or driving around on any highway can come to Summit and charge their car at any point in time.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Marjorie?
I had one follow-up question for you. You said something about using the intercom to get out of the lot. So how does that work if it's after office hours, because the gate is down?
No, basically, we have the intercom system until 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then at 10:00 PM, so we have someone that goes to a cell phone, they will be in lot one, they will see the car, they will let the person out. After 10:00 PM, the gates go up, so the person just drives out.
Okay, so they're, it's manned?
Yeah.
And it's, it's manned currently, or no?
Yes.
Yes, so that doesn't change anything?
No, uh-uh. That's why I structured it that way, so that there's ease of use by the public, and then also no one will get stuck behind a gate.
Okay, great, thank you.
Adamir?
Oh, my question was answered.
Oh.
My question goes kind of to what Marjorie was talking about, is, say an individual is doing it at night, how long, after hours, right, and they have the four-hour maximum, will that car be fully charged after four hours?
Most cars, yes. I mean, that's what it is, there's, normally it's a four-hour max.
Not that I expect a queue to start forming there, but, you know, you never know.
Wow.
You sit there and think it's very close to a couple apartment complexes that are not going to have charging stations.
Right.
You may start to have, and you start to read about these charging stations, and apartments don't have them, so people, you know, the neighborhood's going to start using them, I'm assuming, after hours.
Correct.
And so I don't want to get into, he's hogging the charging.
Well, that's, that's the reason for, you know, the, what's called the sitting fee, the parking fee, that will continue. The charging fee, once the car's charged, the charging fee stops, but the parking fee continues. So that, you know, that we create that turnover effect, that, okay, you can't sit here and leave your car. And again, because we don't know what the usage, but with someone, that's why we picked lot one, because there's normally an ambassador in lot one, we can monitor this on a daily basis, see what's working, see what's not, you know, and then obviously, we feel it's going to work very well, but then we can always tweak it in a couple of months, once we see the usage. But with, speaking with these other towns, I mean, they are used. And people just get out of habits, they're out of the car, they're, they might be walking around downtown Summit, and they'll just say, well, that's all right, I'll pay the fee, like, five hours in DeForest, they'll pay the $50.
Right. Great.
Thank you. So, since it's only two charging stations, or two spots with one charging station, it's going to be relatively easy, I would imagine, to keep an eye on it.
Yes.
So if we see that there's cars consistently parking overnight for, you know, longer than they're supposed to be there, then we can, I would imagine, start to pretty quickly address that.
Oh, and the police could issue the ticket as well.
Of course.
It's on the books that, you know, whether it's a police officer or a parking officer, there's no difference, it's just, I wouldn't want to have to haul a police officer specifically. But, you know, in the routine, they can go through, and if a car is there for an extended period of time, they could feel free to ticket.
Right. Mike?
Yeah, I'm just, looking through the ordinance, I know one of the things we spoke about, Rita, that this means that if someone wants to charge their vehicle, as you mentioned, after hours or on Sundays... to charge their vehicle, as you mentioned, after hours or on Sundays, they're paying a parking fee.
Correct.
But in our, but I don't see anything in the ordinance that talks about the ability to charge vehicles on a Sunday or after hours. It talks that there is an EV fee that's separate from the table, but there's nothing in it that talks about, that changes the permissible hours for parking for an EV vehicle, unless I'm missing something, but I wasn't able to find it anywhere. I just don't know whether we need to do that or not to do that. But I would assume if we're talking of charging people, we, you know, we specifically say we don't charge for parking on Sunday in these lots. This system, we will charge, and I just wonder whether we need to say that specifically or not.
I know we, the City Attorney and I, we did discuss this on the premise that it would be 24/7.
I see that in your memo, but I don't know whether the ordinance allows us to do that or not.
Under the fee section, the following fee shall apply to each designated electric vehicle charging station per 24-hour period. So it's seven days a week, 24-hour period, and then it has after five hours, $50 is a max charge. So it applies all the time, 24 hours a day.
Okay.
One hour, two hours. It's on the third page of the ordinance.
And Mike, what will help with that is proper signage. I mean, we'll have the, you know, the marked as charging spaces only, and obviously with the fees, it'll be very prominent with the signage to let people know that, you know, they will be charged for charging and parking at any point, 24/7.
And to follow up on Councilwoman Bowman and Councilwoman Fox's comment or question. So if this is going on at night, and they're, and say they plug in their car, and after four hours, it's charged, and now it's midnight, the gates are already up or what have you. If they then leave at 6:00 AM before the gates come down, are they being charged from, you know, all night long because they're still plugged in, or do they?
They would get charged $50. Anything over five hours is a one charge of $50.
So even though the station is not charging them, say their battery is fully charged, it would know that they're still plugged in to continue to charge them a fee?
Correct.
And they would get a maximum fee?
That's correct. And also, too, there's no parking in many of the lots, but after 2:30 AM, there's no overnight parking in the lot. So that would be another cue for the police if the car is there. They could issue a summons. I look at it as if a person's going to be there, a $50 charge is plenty enough. But during the day, we could monitor, and then it's prohibited parking ticket at $40. So again, we, you know, we're not trying, it's not the fact of a $50 charge by any means, it's the fact that you need to move your car.
Right.
Yeah.
And then just a question on the company that we're using. They're going to take 10% of the $50 fee if that gets set up?
That's correct.
Or what have you? So any revenue generated at all, it's less 10%?
Unfortunately, the way the, if we had the DeForest 24/7 of parking, like we've discussed in Parking Advisory Committee, it would be an easier issue, you know, where we could say, okay, you come in, you charge through ChargePoint for your charging of the electricity, and then you pay for your parking separately. But the fact that the gates go up at 10 o'clock every night, there's no way I can, we can do that. So it's an hindrance, and it's a way to get by that. That's the only way I can get by it. Because the gates go up at 10 o'clock every day, and then on Sundays, they're just open.
Right.
So I had to have a mechanism to charge for parking as well as the...
I have a question, actually. I'm channeling a question from my son, who asked, what's the source of the, like, are we basically, I mean, part of this is helping with carbon emissions, right?
Correct.
To reduce carbon emissions because we have electric vehicles. But is the source of the, you know, electricity essentially a carbon source? And is it possible to put a solar panel on top of the charging station?
I can look into that, but I think you have to have it hardwired for electricity. Yeah, that's my understanding.
You have a battery.
No, but it's a great question, but I can get back to you on that, but I don't think so in my research. I think it needs to be hardwired because we have an electrical box right there.
Let's see where we end up with it. Okay. With that...
I just have one number of questions, but just one broad comment on this sort of thing.
Sure. But can I take questions to the public?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, is there any member of the public that has a question about this ordinance? Going once, going twice? Okay. So we'll consider the public portion closed, and then now further discussion by members of council.
One more comment.
Who wants to go first?
So I think, just generally speaking, when there's multiple ways that you could be paying involved, that's something that's not exactly ideal. However, this ChargePoint app is sort of universally recognized among people that drive electric cars, and I think could serve as a good tool to drive people to Summit, pun intended, to charge their car, and, you know, maybe they get out and have lunch and shop a little, and that would all be a good thing. So thank you, Rita, for the great effort here.
Thank you.
Yeah, just Rita's been great explaining this, the fee structure, because I did have a lot of questions. I guess philosophically, when these have come up in the past, there's been this thought that, you know, we'll just put it in, and it's great, and we'll pay the electricity for these people and stuff like that. And I know this does not do that, because I've always had a philosophical issue with, generally speaking, in our zip code, the people who drive these electric vehicles don't need any subsidy from the City of Summit. In fact, they don't need subsidies from a lot of people in Summit, as Council President alluded to, that can't afford to subsidize people driving $130,000 cars around. So I'm happy to see that this actually does have some extra revenue over and above the parking spots, because we can charge for parking and get more out of a existing spot. The calculation I did that if we can get an extra five or six hours of parking a week, that with the grant, we can pay this EV station off in five years or so. So that's a good thing. I would have had a real problem with this if we were not getting any extra revenue out of this, to be honest, because again, I think, you know, you go to other towns, and you see some of these things with Tesla as a brand name on the EV charging stations. And they're making an investment in some of these towns that the town is not having to do. So I would have encouraged us pursuing that venue instead, but this is a good thing. I do wonder, however, I know someone in Summit who is developing different battery technology that will allow a battery to be fully charged in four minutes.
Wow.
And that's a game changer.
Sure.
And so I just wonder where, all these municipalities are investing in these things? Hope, if this person's right, in five or so years, you won't need them anymore. And that'll be a real game changer for EV technology.
That would be a huge game changer for a lot of technology with electric stuff. Okay. But any further comments or questions? Okay. With that, I'd consider the hearing closed. Now, moving on, ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, would you please read nineteen dash thirty-two hundred?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter Seven Traffic, Section Seven Dash Eight Parking, Subsection Seven Dash Twenty-Five Dash Two Municipal Parking Lot Areas and Add a New Subsection Seven Dash Twenty-Five Point Two A Electric Vehicle Charging Stations.
Councilwoman Gould.
This ordinance touches upon almost the same thing. It's the electrical charging stations, establishing the regulations and setting the fees that we just discussed, making sure that, sorry, just a complete blank. I apologize.
All we're doing is saying that...
I'll jump in. I'll jump in. We'll move the ordinance.
As discussed.
We'll move the ordinance for final consideration. As discussed.
As discussed.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Naidoo?
Aye.
Okay. Tonight, we have two ordinances for here, introduction. They'll be heard at the next council meeting, which is November 6th. We have, both of them are from law and labor. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of sixty-seven fifty-one?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter Six Alcoholic Beverage Control, Section Six Dash Four Density Restrictions.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. As our county clerk, our city clerk said, ordinance number sixty-seven fifty-one is an ordinance amending the code. Basically, what we're doing is changing the distance between licensed premises from 1,500 feet to reducing it to 300 feet. I move this ordinance for introduction, and as Council President said, we will hear it at our next meeting Wednesday, the 11th, November 6th.
I second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Naidoo?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, law and labor, sixty-seven fifty. Madam Clerk, would you please read that ordinance for introduction?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter Four General Licensing, Section Four Dash Nine Removal and Storage of Motor Vehicles and Section Four Dash Nine Point One Four Appendix A Fees of the City of Summit in accordance with Public Law 2018, Chapter One Sixty-Five, Section Two.
Got to close that out there. Yes. We are introducing this ordinance, number sixty-seven fifty, and basically what we're doing is streamlining and making it an order, towing and storage in line with the state police processes. I moved, we will also hear this on November 6th. I move this ordinance for introduction.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Naidoo?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're moving on to resolutions. We have two resolutions from the Finance Committee. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. The first finance resolution is number six seven two one, and this is to approve the New Jersey DCA Required 2020 Best Practice Inventory Program and certify the occurrence of a public meeting. This is something that we do every year. The state requires us to go through a certification of best practices in our finances in order to qualify us for the final allocation of the state CMP TRA and ETR aid. And it's based on our answers to the inventory that is provided by the state. Thank you to Tammy Baldwin and her staff. They did a great job going through this inventory. There are a number of questions. There are 53 that are scored, and we responded positively to 50 of those, and we only needed 30 in order to fully qualify for the aid. So we were well over the threshold. Everything was in good order. I will just point out the three things that were, that we answered no to, were all things that we've discussed before in the city. But one asked for an accumulated absence liability trust fund. We don't allow for accumulation of vacation sick time in the city. One talked about the audit, which we had talked about a previous council meeting. We only had one correction in our audit. And one talked about the revale, which is something that is in our future, but is not on the immediate horizon. So those were the three things. They are all being addressed and, you know, looked at by the city, but it was an excellent overview of the city's financial practices and best practices. And thank you again to our new CFO, Tammy Baldwin, and her staff. They did a great job. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Thank you. Second. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Let me broach the subject of the revale, because that's something that some people have always asked, like, when is the city going to do a revale? And/or why hasn't the city already done a revaluation? And I will try to get this right, and if there's other seniors on the day, who will probably correct me if I go totally off kilter. But one of the reasons that we have not done a revaluation already is that the county is in the process of going through different towns and putting basically on a schedule to figure out when a revale should be done. And the county has to certify our revale. And if the county is not prepared to do that, it doesn't make sense for us to take on the expense, which will cost us at least a million-plus dollars to do. Or maybe, the city minister is looking at me going, maybe...
I think it'll be lower.
Huh? Low?
Possibly lower.
Possibly lower.
That was an estimate at some point years ago that they made, but...
Maybe it's lower. But it's some number of dollars, of city taxpayers' dollars. And we do not want to incur that expense if ultimately we are not going to have the ability of having the county certify that revaluation. So I know sometimes people send us emails or saying, you know, why is it that you haven't done it yet? That's the reason. So it isn't that it isn't on our horizon. It is on our horizon. We just have to figure out in conjunction with the county when it will be on that horizon. Okay. Any other, anybody want to make any comments? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, finance number two.
Thank you, Council President. Finance number two is Resolution Six Seven Three Nine, and it's to authorize a salary increase for a DCS employee who is being promoted to replace another employee who retired. So then I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have one from Safety and Health. Councilwoman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the purchase of portable radios for the police department for a total cost of $279,068. These radios will complete the transition of our emergency communications apparatus to a modern and more resilient digital system that will allow all responders across different departments to communicate effectively. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Steve?
Last year, when we were on council, we talked, what was going, what are we doing with the old radios? Are they going to public works? Or were we talking about doing something like that?
They don't work.
They're going to be outdated, so, I mean, we can use them for other things, but right now, it's kind of just a old email.
That was it.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have community programs. We have three, we have three resolutions, and then what we will do is, there are three more that are issues for discussion, action, and referral. And what I would like to do is, once we go through our first three, we'll address those because there's some members of the public who are interested in those, and we can go through them and see if we can make resolutions at the end of each one of them and vote on through them and see if we can make resolutions at the end of each one of them and vote on them from the floor. Okay? So, community programs, Councilwoman Gould, number one, please.
Thank you, President. Resolution 6754, authorized purchase and installation of electrical vehicle charging station, Educational Service Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System for This is for the actual EV charging station that will be hardwired into the, for the two parking spots in the DeForest lot that we've been discussing.
Second. Great. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion?
I'll, one more comment. We voted at the last council meeting to accept a grant from the state of New Jersey, so that will offset the cost of this by $6,000.
Right, so it's down to $11,360.50.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, community programs, number two, Councilwoman Gould.
Resolution 6731, approve one-year contract extension, Broad Street Eats Valet Parking Concession, Parking Services Plus Inc. for $135,000. This is to extend the valet parking that we already have in the Broad Street lot with the contract with Parking Services Plus. This has actually been going quite well.
Second. Any comments or questions from...
As a former liaison to the community programs board, it was my understanding that it's, at any point, we could stop this contract with 30-day notice. Is that correct? Is that gonna continue in the current contract? So, if something happens with the construction, with the redevelopment or anything, we could give notice and this contract could be terminated? Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mike?
Just for the public, the terms are the same, right, for, as we extend this?
Term is right.
Right.
And there's no fee additionally for terminating the contract, so...
All great.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, community programs, number three, Councilwoman Gould.
Resolution 6730, approve one-year contract extension for dynamic ride-sharing program, Lyft Inc., not to exceed 200,000 per contract year. This is to extend the Lyft program that we already have in Summit that we have approximately, Rita, can you confirm, approximately 300-plus riders?
Yeah, 332 plus 11, so total 343 participants currently.
So, the program has actually been very successful.
Second. Any comments or questions from members of council? I will say this, so, I asked for what the costs were when we first started this program, which was with Uber, and the, even though we had budgeted, I can't remember what the X amount of dollars were, the actual costs were around $63,000, right? And that's what taxpayers pay, right? Because there's a differential, so, what is this, what are we budgeting here? Between the actual cost for the ride and what the individual rider pays, there's a differential in that cost that we collectively as taxpayers pay. And the reason, the parking authority pays, sorry, I'm sorry, parking authority pays, which comes out of the parking authority revenue, which a significant portion of it's city residents park, and that goes towards it. So, but that is actually absolutely accurate. And, but now, this year, as of August, we've already come to about $120-plus thousand in parking authority paying towards that differential. I am concerned about how much is that differential being picked up by the parking authority? And we keep on doing this every year because there's a reason we did this program, and I understand the reason, which was, you know, offsetting the need for a parking structure. And so, there's a public good, and there is a cost savings, a significant cost savings with that, but I'm wondering whether we should be having a more intensive discussion, frankly, about whether people who are taking a car service should be paying the same rate as people who are driving their own car, because there is some benefit. I mean, those of us, or people who go ahead and drive their own car, well, if it's raining and it's snowing and you're doing, you know, you have to shovel your own snow, and you have to do all of that stuff. Person gets picked up, brought over, and there are benefits to that person. And so, I am getting a little concerned, frankly, about how much of this differential we keep on picking up. It's great we have all these people joining, but that just means the parking authority is also paying more out of its revenue, which makes it so that the parking authority has less available for the other services that we expect the parking authority to pay for. And that becomes problematic. I'll let Rita come up, because she may want to address it, but Beth, if you want to address, Mike.
I'm gonna take the devil's advocate side and go for, and say I take a different view. And I think there is a, you know, you could also argue that the commuter's taking the Lyft, they're not going on their own schedule, they're having to plan ahead, they're having to, you know, go at the whim of the driver, they, you know, maybe leaving a little earlier, waiting at the train station for their ride. There are some, you know, there's pros and cons to each side, and using the Lyft service frees up spots that we desperately need in the downtown, and at a cost that is, you know, much less than if we were to provide any kind of parking structure, any kind of parking spaces. We've talked about the enormous costs of providing parking, especially on a city dime. So, I think this program is a huge win-win. I'm really pleased, as, again, after being on community programs and seeing the increase, we're up to over 500 rides a week. That's spaces that we don't have cars in our downtown, and I think, you know, that's well worth the cost of this program. So, I'm gonna give you the other side of that.
No, that's fine. I understand the other side of the equation. I'm just wondering whether or not we should have a discussion, a more fulsome discussion at some place, sometime, about how much, how much it's taking. Rita, come on up.
It's a very good question, and with the Park Advisory Committee, and as you very well know, I've been advocating for more parking for a few number of years now, but I take a little different philosophy in reference to, if you want to change, with parking, if you want to change behavior, you use pricing. So, again, we just went through that with the 90-minute meters a little bit more, and on your outskirts, your longer hours, the price per hour is less. We look at it differently in the parking world. If you want to park your car, it should cost you more, because eventually, we're gonna have to build parking. Hopefully, we won't have to build as much, but we're going to have to build in order to survive with our downtown the way it is currently. So, the thinking is, if we don't have to build as much, really, you increase, just food for thought, the discussions that we have been having, is that you increase your daily parking rate for that car to sit in a city-owned and operated structure, because if they do the Lyft, and we have to subsidize a little bit, it just, the cost overall will be less of the subsidy for the Lyft program as opposed to adding maybe 400, 500 spaces when we may only need to do 300. So, that's where your cost analysis comes in. But yes, with all of the discussions, I've had it with Michael a number of times, we're thinking about it, maybe that goes into next year with the redevelopment plan and how that's all going to turn around, but it's a very good point.
Thank you. Mike?
I think it's, we probably overdue for a long, just a review of the program. I mean, I'm a fan of it, as I echo what Councilwoman Little said, because the flipside of this, and it'll be interesting to see the numbers, is, you know, if we have 100 cars a day using this thing, that's 100 extra spots in the downtown, and there's a revenue component to that as well. That's 100 extra spots that we, you know, we're filling up that, you know, it helps to offset this in some degree. I guess, you know, it's good to look at the totality of it to make sure that we're not, you know, Broad, the Broad Street Garage, for instance, is not sitting half-empty, you know, because I get that, but my, I threw that out there just as an it, but, because we, but we should monitor these things, you know? It's great to, I mean, my sense is this is a great program. I haven't looked at the numbers in a year, and it would be great to see them, I guess. It's just my one comment, but I think the program's great, and I applaud our city administrator for coming up with this a few years ago, and, you know, I think it's great that people are using it. I think the big frustration when we first began it was, why aren't people jumping on this thing? But like anything, it takes time for something to catch on.
I mean, I'm not saying not having the program. I'm saying, when it looks at the pricing structure, maybe, maybe the idea of comprehensively looking at a pricing structure makes sense, but I do think, what one looks at, the difference is, of course, I mean, there's, obviously, one can look at it in different ways, right? One way of looking at it, and I guess the way I'm thinking about it, is there are those things that, we've decided on a specific pricing structure for people to park in the parking garage. You change that, yes, true, but it, but those people are not getting effectively some subsidy for all intents and purposes, right? They're paying whatever rate we've said, selected, they're paying what that is, and they're making decisions based upon that. The people who are deciding to take the program are getting a benefit, and they're making a decision because we want to incentivize it. I get that, and I understand the reasons why. I voted for this program when it first started, so it's not like, and I'm not saying I'm not gonna vote for it now, I'm just saying that when we do these types of things, and we see the costs increasing year after year, share that we are taking, we should start becoming cognizant about what it is, how we're doing this, because it is not simply, okay, it's a great program, we just write a blank check for it. Michael?
So, back in 2015, when we started the program, we looked at, we started with 100 participants, and we ran out the scenario of, if there was 80% utilization, what would that look like over a 12-month period? And we built the budget on that in 2016, which was, I think we budgeted around $242,000, I think was the number. We had 100 participants, we were probably averaging around 25 users per day, that was what it worked out to be. Now, we've increased it to over 300, and we're still up to, through August, about 120. We budgeted 150, we reduced it, but the rides per month are increasing. So, I think it's just for the public to understand, yes, the number is bigger than last year, where we'll wind up at the end of this year, but we've tripled the amount of the participants, and we're still not even there, where we ideally wanted to be, which was 100. So, I think that's just in, when we're thinking about this, and I'm not saying we shouldn't analyze the program and look at all the pricing, but I just want to put that out there to kind of frame it more accurately.
But my recollection, because I sat as the chair of the Community Programs and Parking Committee at that point in time, when we actually, when it came up for 2016, and so, my recollection is that the price, the actual overall total cost per ride was lower at that time than it is right now.
It was, and it was, had a lot to do with the incentives that were being provided by Uber and then Lyft.
Right.
And so, that's why you see the average price increasing, and they've also added taxes to this that didn't exist back then. But it's still, when you've looked at the, when you look at this number, it's still well under what we were anticipating back in 2016.
Anyway, I think I've made my point, to the extent there is one. Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, as I said, we will move up the three community programs, discussion, action, and referral items, the first of which is 6748, and for those of, those of you who are watching at home or here in the audience, we actually had a pretty detailed discussion on each of these at the last council meeting, and so, we're following up from that discussion. The first is dealing with the SDI request for holiday parking, and I'll let...
I'll take the lead on that.
Yeah, I'll take.
Council President.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So, there's three of these DAR items to be discussed, so the way that we're, I'm hoping to frame them relatively quickly, is to talk about the request, the background for historical precedents, and the committee's recommendation. So, starting with number 6748, SDI's request for holiday parking. So, the request from Summit Downtown Inc. is for free holiday parking in the downtown from December 14th to December 29th, 2019. This is a total of 12 days and includes the 90-minute meters, the ground level of the tier garage, and the Bank Street lot. So, the background is, a similar request for holiday parking is submitted virtually every year. The first request that was submitted to the city from SDI this year included free holiday parking downtown, including the DeForest Avenue lots. The original request stated that SDI would, quote, aggressively advertise the free parking, credit the City of Summit for it, and the purchase of large durable bags to cover the pay stations, end quote. Past councils have opposed free holiday parking for several reasons, including a lack of quantitative data showing the free parking increases revenue. Two, the requests have typically been made very close to when the free parking would begin. And three, the requests represent a significant loss in revenue, and SDI has previously been unwilling to contribute financially to help offset that cost. Last year, the council adopted a compromise plan that made Saturday parking through the month of December free. This year, the request was made much earlier, in June. Negotiation has taken place over the last several months to come up with a reasonable and fair compromise with the following parameters. So, free downtown parking from December 14th through the 29th of this year, free 90-minute meters, tier garage, and Bank Street lots. The original request for DeForest lots was removed, as parking there is already free for 60 minutes, and the loss of revenue will partially be offset by a financial contribution from SDI to the city of $3,000. SDI has also submitted to the city a list of all the places the free parking will be marketed. So, the committee's recommendation is that a resolution be introduced and adopted now from the floor to accept that plan.
Second. Any comments or questions from members of council? Mike?
Yeah, having sat up here for several years, talking about this every year.
It's earlier in the year.
Yeah, exactly.
There you go.
It's not after Halloween, it's before, which is great.
That was our big goal for this year, to achieve that.
No, I'm really, really happy. You know, I've never been opposed to doing this, except that I always wanted to make sure that the businesses really cared about this, that this just wasn't just sort of a free ask, and, oh yeah, we'll do it, why not? And the reason I was always very insistent on there had to be some, some monetary contribution, didn't have to cover 50% of our lost revenue, or 90 or 100%, but just some nominal contribution, was if you, if they're not willing to pay anything, why are we doing it? And I know last year, we went back and forth and came up with a compromise just to do the Saturday, so, I don't, can't read minds, but I'm happy that this year, they've come back with, I think, a much more reasonable thing, where we'll have free metered parking in the downtown for 90 minutes, and as Councilman Vartan eloquently put it, we already have free parking in the DeForest lots 365 days a year, which is a great marketing aspect up for our downtown, and the contribution, I think, means that SDI gets it, and they care, and I'm very happy that we're, we finally arrived at this outcome.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Steve, yes?
And just don't remind, remind everybody that we have free parking on Saturdays as well, in the transit lots as well, so, that's still there, and that'll always be there every Saturday.
And Sunday.
And Sunday, yes.
There's so much free parking.
Can't even keep track.
Exactly. But I do think, I agree, that I think it is, I've always supported the idea that, of having some type of free parking during the holiday period, because I think it is important for our businesses. I think it's about a competitive issue with other towns and what they're doing. I think we want to make sure our downtown is thriving, and in fact, our downtown very much is thriving by the fact that we have an extremely low first-floor vacancy rate in town. I mean, it is just incredible how, I think there may be one probably storefront that's open right now that for sale, I mean, for rent, but we want to make sure that it's kept that way, and we want to make sure that we have a good working relationship with the Summit Downtown Inc., which I think we have achieved over the last few years. So, with that, we actually have a, I could, how are we gonna do this, Madam Clerk? We do have a draft resolution from the floor. Do you want, do you want to just read that, or just the, kind of the now, therefore?
Do you want to read the now, therefore?
Yeah, let's just do the now, therefore, and if there is, if everybody can agree on that, then we, actually, before we do that, do I have any comments from the members of the public over this issue? Okay? Now, therefore.
Now, therefore, that it, that the common council of the City of Summit does hereby grant free parking at the 90-minute kiosks in the downtown area, and the Bank Street lot, and the two-hour parking only on the ground level of the tier garage from Saturday, December 14th, through Saturday, December 28th, 2019. Number two, that it does hereby accept the contribution from SDI in the amount of $3,000 to offset the city's anticipated revenue loss. That it does hereby, that SDI shall provide comprehensive marketing of the 2019 free holiday parking season pursuant to SDI's marketing plan as submitted on October 10th, 2019. That SDI shall reimburse the city for the purchase of pre-printed covers for the aforementioned 24 parking kiosks. That in order to encourage turnover, time limits at the above-described locations shall be strictly enforced by the Parking Services Agency. That at the completion of the free parking period, the Parking Services Manager shall provide a report to the governing body as to the effectiveness of this effort. And last, that authorization of free parking shall be enforced for the 2019 holiday season only.
Do I have a motion to adopt this?
One last comment. I think it bears noting that a couple of years ago, this council, or the council approved free parking over Thanksgiving, so, that is something that's enforced, and I know we're talking about the holidays, and it's just something I think the public should be aware of, that we have free parking, I believe, now on, what does it read? Is it Friday and small business Saturday as well, along the same lines here?
Right, and that, that's right. That was adopted by ordinance.
...
Thanksgiving, yeah, okay. But do I have a resol, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as, substantively as described by the city clerk?
Seconded.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great, okay, moving on. Now, let's do the second one, which is community programs number two, dealing with the request from New Darlington LLC regarding 123-127 Summit Avenue to remove one parking meter on Summit Avenue. Who wants to... Who wants to address this, Councilman Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. So, there are, number 6749, there are three requests from New Darlington LLC. The request has been made by the owners to waive an additional hour of construction, a reduced bag fee, reduce, I'm sorry, waiver for the noise ordinance on one additional hour of construction, a reduced bag fee for one of the parking meters on Summit Avenue, and the permanent removal of an additional parking meter on Summit Avenue. So the background is, the noise ordinance waiver was reviewed and has been approved by the city administrator. The bag fee is normally $25 per day, but it has been reduced to $10 per day before by past councils for long-term projects. And the fee for permanently removing a meter is $20,000. This represents an estimated annual revenue of $1,000 per year over the course of 20 years. This fee has been waived completely by past councils. So, the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee recommendation is, we have just had a discussion about SDI contributing to downtown parking. Parking spaces and the revenue associated with them belong to the Parking Authority and the people of Summit. As we look holistically at the broad direction of the city over the next several years, we will continue to see increased strain on the parking infrastructure. Further, we should no longer be giving away parking revenue as a subsidy to private businesses without any sort of contribution. We believe a reasonable and fair compromise in this instance is to agree to a reduced fee of $10 per day for the long-term bagging of the first parking meter, and it is also the recommendation of the committee that the full $20,000 be charged for the permanent removal of the additional parking space. This request is the result of the design of the building and does not represent an added value for the public at large. We would like to open this up for discussion by the rest of the council.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public?
I have a question.
Marjorie, yes, please.
Yeah, I know we discussed this, but I'm trying to remember the bag fee, it's, they've requested $10 instead of the 25. What is the revenue that we would generally get in a given day from this meter? I know we discussed it, but I can't recall what the number was.
Again, it's, depending upon, you know, the different locations of the meters, but it could be with turnover an hour at a dollar an hour. It does, I mean, it's usually 10 hours, right, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. You know, it's just, this is the fee that's been set. Most towns, anywhere from 15 to $25, because you're taking that space out, whether it's for two or three days, or in this case, it's over six months to a year.
And I'm sorry, you said 50 to $25, or 15?
15, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Cold. It's 15 to $25 per day. It's just a going rate of taking a meter out of service for the public. And if you see in downtown, and I question that, we've had three meters on Springfield Avenue due to work being done, a facade of a building and a roof, because they, the work has to be required, but that takes away from spaces in the heart of downtown for quite a number of weeks now, so that's the reason for the fee.
So where did we get the $10 number?
It was just something that was recommended and prior council approved it. As a matter of fact, the developer at the time wanted only $5 per space per day, and the council at that time agreed to $10. My recommendation was 15, council, you know, at that time went $10.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Rita, since you're up there, let me just ask you, so how would this work? So it's $10, I mean, so you said it was, they could be the construction project either six or more, or more for a year, so how is this, so when the construction project ends, you get notice, and then it goes back to being a regular meter? I mean, how is? Oh, absolutely. Basically, what I've worked out with other developers is there's a monthly billing. Our office keeps track of every day. If there's a holiday, obviously, they don't get charged. They don't get charged on Sundays, according to the ordinance that's on the books. And then we tally up those days and the number of meters. Sometimes this is only one, other times it's been nine, and we would send them a bill, and then they would make payment to us on a monthly basis. And once it's over, then we put that meter back into circulation for the public use. Okay. And I know, I know some of the folks who may be involved in this project are here. Is there any reason for them to think that it's going to be longer than a year? No? Okay.
It's fine, Mark, you just. Our best estimate right now is it's going to be about 12, potentially 14 months, but that's pretty good.
All right. Okay. So it could be longer than a year, because you said 12 to 14 months, yes?
12 to 14, depending on the weather conditions, it will be over two months.
Got it. Okay. All right. That's, any other questions or comments? Huh? I'm sorry?
I'm not.
Okay. So effectively, what we would be doing is drafting an ordinance, if I'm getting this right, for a long-term fee for one particular meter of $10 per day.
By resolution.
By resolution, right? And then $20,000 fee for, as a compensation for the permanent removal of another meter. Right? And?
Yes.
Yes, right? That's the resolution we're working on. Bart or Mark, do you guys have something that you want to add to the, just before, before we do this, as far as, you want to come up? Mark? Yeah?
Thank you. Mr. Council President, Mark Yeager, Y-E-A-G-E-R, 58 Prospect Hill Avenue, Summit, New Jersey. So I am the developer of the project in question. I just want to be clear, there's two parking meters that we're talking about.
Yeah.
So the $20,000 is for the permanent removal-
Correct.
-of the one.
Yes.
Yes.
During construction and post-construction.
Right.
Correct.
And the $10 bagging fee is for the other meter.
The other one.
Just during the period of construction.
Construction, which you said is between 12 and 14 months.
Correct. I'm clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's fine. So if, so that is what we just discussed. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution that we just discussed?
So moved.
Wait, we're doing this, we're actually voting on a resolution now? From the floor?
From the floor.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, unless people want to discuss this anymore.
Is it two resolutions or one?
One.
So one doing both?
One, because it applies to the same applicant, right? The applicant is New Darlington LLC, is making this request, and so therefore, it's, it's for one resolution, but dealing with two different meters, and two different fees associated with that. Right?
Correct.
Okay. With that clarification, do I have a motion? Yes, somebody motioned?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. So that takes care of that. Now, moving on to number three, community programs. I'll let Councilman Vartan address that.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So this is number 6732, and this is for a reduction in the bagged meter fee at 133 Summit Ave., which is Parmley Place. So the request is similar to the last conversation, and is actually also on Summit Avenue. The request is to bag a parking meter for an extended period of construction, and that the fee be lowered from $25 to $10 per day. As discussed, council has done this before, just a minute ago, and it is a fair and reasonable compromise. The Community Programs Parking Services Committee recommendation is that this request should be granted, and I would like to open it up for discussion and also vote on a resolution to approve it.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Mike?
Just the same question that you asked, Council President. Do we have a estimated time for this? How long this is going to be taking place for?
Is there anybody here who can speak to it? Yes, come on up, please.
Thank you. My name is Laura Borth, B-O-R-T-H. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Buckaloo, Frazell, and Corvina in Glen Rock, and I represent the Summit Parmley Company, which is the co-op that we're talking about here. It's actually the same construction as the previous issue that the council considered, because my client has its dumpsters located on a piece of property. I believe it's between the two, and that those dumpsters need to be removed and placed into the street for the duration of the reconstruction at the other property, for those 12 to 14 months that we were just discussing. And I also want to clarify that this is not about bagging parking meters, because the area where the Summit Parmley would be moving the dumpsters to, there are no meters.
Okay. Let her finish, and then Rita will do this.
Sorry.
And I believe, Rita, you received an email from someone from my office with the picture of a parking meter on it, but my understanding from the Board of Directors of the Summit Parmley, Tony Albanese, who I have with, here with me tonight, that was actually an error. It is, there are two buildings, and one building has meters in front of it, and one building does not have meters in front of it, and the area to which the dumpsters are proposed to be moved for the duration of the construction is the, is in front of the building that does not have parking meters. So it would be in, the dumpsters would be in the street, but not in metered spaces. I did want to clarify that.
Okay. I can honestly say, I'm very confused.
So what are we voting on?
Sure.
Yeah, now, obviously, we're not voting until we get this clarified. Come on up, Rita, let's try to figure this out here.
This is 100% news to me. While, yes, I did receive a picture of the meter, which was meter number 31, where these dumpsters were going to be placed, it has not been approved by the Traffic Division or Public Works to put dumpsters in a street in a non-metered space. A lot of that area, there's no parking, there's traffic lights, there's entrances and exits, so what, maybe we should table this until I have a further discussion?
Well, honestly, we will just, right now, because we, we're not going to vote on something that, none of us are, all of us are scratching our heads, because I, I completely concur. Let me just finish, because, because what, if I, if we're hearing you right, you're saying there's no reason we could vote on this, because there's no meter involved. So that takes parking out of the equation, in that sense, but what it doesn't do is, it doesn't take then safety and, and DCS and fire and, and everybody else, because what you're suggesting, if I'm hearing you right, is putting a dumpster in an area that is otherwise for traffic. Yes?
Yes, excuse me, second. Yes, and if I may clarify, this was pre, my understanding is that this was previously done during an asbestos removal project at the, the property that burned down, 125 Summit Avenue, that's being rebuilt. While asbestos was being removed from the debris, my client's dumpsters were previously put into the spot that they're proposing to put it in now. But I do understand this is different than what was presented to the town prior to this evening, because this discrepancy just came to my notice this evening, tonight, so my apologies for that, but we are going to get that cleared up.
I think probably the best way to do this is for whatever proposal comprehensively you guys are trying to make, you send it through the proper channels, we're getting it reviewed by all the different departments that probably have to weigh in on this, and then when, if and when it needs to come to council, it will do so. But right now, we are not voting on anything regarding this. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That takes care of community programs. We're going to move on. We have one resolution for law and labor, because the first one has been tabled, and that is now law and labor number two, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Law and Labor number two, ID number, resolution number 6756. This will authorize extension of sick leave with pay for the employee in the tax assessor's office. As we discussed in closed session, we hope this individual employee who's undergoing surgery had a speedy recovery, but I move this resolution.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Beth? Second. Sorry.
It's okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we go through nine different resolutions for capital projects, so basically I turn over the gavel to Marjorie Fox to lead us through everything else. I am not going to keep on asking for one at a time. Marjorie, you will just go ahead as we go through.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. First one is resolution number 1, 6709. This resolution adopts the sidewalk installation and maintenance policy. And this policy was developed by the Engineering Division in cooperation with Capital Projects and Community Services Committee and the Safety and Health Committee. There was a presentation at the March 5th council meeting about this policy, and this version incorporates the comments that have been made since that time. After the presentation, the Safety Committee spearheaded a survey of Summit public school families to get input on walking routes to school, and those routes are reflected in the maps in the plan. The written descriptions of the routes in Appendix A are actually superseded by the maps, so I would propose that those not be adopted as part of this plan. Is, is that workable? Matt? No? Can we do that?
By not adopting the-
The, just Appendix A? Can we just, just agree that we won't adopt that? Can we do that?
What are you going to have in place of Appendix A?
No Appendix A, just gone.
You, you, what you would do then-
Just delete it.
Is you delete, you'd make a motion to amend the, the resolution removing Appendix A.
So I have to do a second resolution.
The resolution right now would be to adopt it, removing Appendix A.
Right. Okay. Yeah. Okay, that's what I'm asking. Okay. And then Councilmember Vartan will speak about the survey process after, during this discussion of the resolution. One of the actions identified in this policy is to address the city's practice of assessing property owners for the cost of new and replacement sidewalks. And the policy recommends that the city no longer assess property owners for new and replacement sidewalks. Property owners will still be responsible for maintenance, and this change to the city's ordinance will be introduced at our next council meeting on November 6th. This policy is consistent with the 2016 master plan reexamination, which Goal 3 was to improve connectivity. And one of the actions identified is to promote the implementation of a full and complete sidewalk network. So that, this is one of the issues that Summit residents raise very frequently as being important to them, so that's the reason why we're undertaking this now, and I enthusiastically move this resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. So this is what we will do. We will first deal with the resolution as is, with the sidewalk master plan, I mean, the sidewalk installation and maintenance policy, and then we'll take the resolution to revise it to remove Appendix A, right? Because you want to-
Rosie's shaking her head.
You could adopt the resolution.
So I'm just, I'm moving it as, as amended without Appendix A.
Okay, fine. Sorry, sorry. It's amended, as amended, so you remove Appendix A, so we all understand that, you still have the sidewalk installation and maintenance policy. I will say this, I, I think this is very interesting, which is that, first, I agree, the master plan talks about the need for connectivity and the need for sidewalks. Many, many eons ago, when I was on the Environmental Commission, I served on the ad hoc committee dealing with sidewalks that was created by council and the mayor at that point in time. That was many, many years ago. And the reason it was done was because there was such a controversy in this town about having sidewalks. You see the silence in this room? Little, it is because I think this-
But I've already gotten one email from someone who saw that it was on the agenda tonight and does not want a sidewalk.
Well-
So I'm just saying, we cannot assume that things will all be-
I, I'm not suggesting that, that there's never somebody who's going to be in opposition to something, Nora. I think we know that that will, there's always somebody that's going to say they're not going to like something. That being said, I think when that time it was, it was much more controversial, and I think that's partly because of how many people now rely upon sidewalks, partly because of how much traffic there is in this town, and what happens with safety and pedestrian safety, and how many things we have done in the last few years to deal with pedestrian safety. But one of the biggest ways of dealing with pedestrian safety is to make sure that people do not end up with a sidewalk that suddenly ends and then they're on the road. That is a key. And this policy, what it's intended to do is to make sure that as roads are repaved, that those roads that are now designated as needing sidewalks, they will have sidewalks in them. I think that's a very important change in policy. So, that's my comments. Anybody else? Beth?
I have a couple comments. One is that I completely agree with the policy of the, of the assessment changing, and it's for this reason. One is the change in, that Council President and I do refer to, that we've seen in residents really going from, a few years ago where they were very opposed to sidewalks, to almost a complete sea change where people are asking us for sidewalks. And I think that the majority has changed. The second part of that is that we, in this plan and in this ordinance, and I want to thank Marjorie and her committee and, and all the work that's gone into this, Paul, everyone involved, because I know this has been a very long and involved process. But the way we've drawn this up is to prioritize walking paths into town, into schools, and kind of community walking paths. And in doing that, we've established that these sidewalks are really a community benefit, and they're not for the benefit of the individual homeowner, that the sidewalk's being installed in front of their home, they are a benefit to the community at large. And that's what we're doing in this plan and prioritizing it that way. And if we're going to prioritize it that way, I think it's only fair that the community bear the cost for the sidewalks. So that's my first point. My second point is, going back to Mayor Ades' comment about receiving an email, I received the same email as well, and I want to make sure that my understanding is correct, is that these, the sidewalks that are identified in this plan will be done along with road projects. And at that point, when we're discussing that road project and approving those individual road products, projects, that residents will still have an opportunity to come before the council and make a case as to, you know, even though their sidewalk has been designated as part of the priority in this plan, why there might be a reason that it's not feasible to put a sidewalk in that area. And I want to assure people in the room and watching at home that there's still going to be another opportunity to express either favor or not favor of, of the individual sidewalks that are, that would be approved by this council.
Thank you, Beth. I think, I think that's absolutely right, and I think, also, I want to just commend Councilman Vartan, who's involved in reaching out?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have, I should have mentioned Councilman Vartan as well. I know he's been very involved in this as well.
No, no, and, and also our Department of, our Director of Communications, because they reached out to the PTOs, they reached out to folks to try to get as much input as possible. I agree, I mean, people still have an opportunity to come in, but part of it is that, as you said, it is a community benefit, and, you know, it, it doesn't make sense if you just break off sidewalks and not allow people to have a traverse through it, because you're, you're living out of your home in a certain period of time. You decide to sell your home, two days later after the sidewalks put in, suddenly, that does not have benefit to the rest of the community if you decide to walk away from your home. Right? So, but anybody else, any other comments from members of council? Greg?
Just speaking to process, very briefly. So, the Safety and Health Committee worked closely with the Capitol Projects Committee on this policy. We also worked with the Communications Director and the PTO President's Council to develop and send out a survey for all parents of children in public schools. So there were more than 500 survey responses. Results of that survey helped to recreate those safe walking routes to school, that Councilwoman Fox mentioned. They are available in this plan and on the city website. Those routes were last updated more than 10 years ago. So updating them also helped highlight some of the streets where additional sidewalks are going to be necessary. This policy is the result of really wonderful teamwork, diligence, and coordination between multiple committees and departments. Special thanks to Paul Cascades, Aaron Schreger, Chief Weck, and Amy Cairns. I'm extremely proud to have been part of this process, and I look forward to the way that this plan will shape the city for the next generation of people.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you. Any?
I just wanted to clarify one thing.
Sure.
Appendix A, as Greg mentioned, Appendix A is what the walking routes were over 10 years ago. So that's why we're removing them from the plan, because the map is a better guide to what the actual walking routes and actual conditions are.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, Capitol Projects Two.
Well, you weren't supposed to do that.
Oh, exactly, I was supposed to do. It's by force of habit. It's by force of habit. I take it back.
Thank you, Council President. 6716. This resolution authorizes the execution of a contract for the sale of real property at 71 Summit Avenue, known as Old Town Hall, and it's a sale to Family Promise. And Family Promise has leased this property since 1997 and now seeks to purchase the property. The contract is contingent upon the grant of a use variance to permit use of, on the first floor, of office use on the first floor. And that's currently prohibited by the, by the DRO in this, in the Central Business District. Family Promise has made an application to the zoning board for the use variance, and the hearing is scheduled for November 4. Assuming the zoning board grants the variance, the introduction of an ordinance for the sale of public property is scheduled for November 6 at the next council meeting. The sale of the property will be for the appraised price of 1.4 million, and New Jersey law allows the city to sell property in a private sale in limited circumstances, and one of which is sale to a nonprofit that provides social services to the general public. And Family Promise meets this requirement as a national nonprofit organization that helps families experiencing homelessness. The sale agreement requires the property to revert to the city should it no longer be used to provide these services. Finally, because this sitting, this building was once used as the city hall and summit and has historical value to its residents, the sale agreement restricts any changes to the building facade without prior approval of common council. Family Promise not only does great work to help homeless families, but engages many Summit residents through hosting families at their houses of worship. My kids and I have volunteered for Family Promise at our synagogue, and it has been a wonderful learning experience for all of us. So I'm pleased that we have Class Outlers here tonight to speak a little bit about Family Promise and explain what the organization does, and I enthusiastically move this resolution.
Okay.
Stephanie?
Oh, second.
Okay.
I was thinking about everything you said, sorry.
Any comments or questions from members of council before I ask Klaus to come up? One thing, I just want to clarify, I think, when you said it was going to be the first floor office, you, I think you specified that it was for first floor office use for nonprofits, right? It's not for commercial purposes that it could be used.
It would be for Family Promise's use.
Or, or other nonprofits that could possibly?
Could potentially be used.
But not for commercial purposes.
Correct, correct.
Right, just so it's clear about that. Klaus, you want to come up and talk about Family Promise a little bit?
Do I need to introduce myself?
Yes, you do.
Klaus Ehlers, E-H-L-E-R-S, 132 Parkway in Mountainside. Thank you very much. Family Promise was born in Summit in 1986 in direct response to a crisis, DIFIS. The number one reason why DIFIS was placing children in foster care in 1986 was not abuse or neglect, it was because their parents had become homeless. And it was an ad hoc effort, but it involved many congregations out of Union County, many organizations, and many in Summit. In 1988, we became a national organization, and we moved into the town hall in 1999, 2000, because we had to do renovations to, to bring it up. And there's about 20 different Summit organizations involved, both houses of worship, but even the police department does a wonderful drive for us every year. So it's very much ingrained in Summit. Being able to stay in this space allows us to continue to do our work both nationally, we've served more than 100, 900,000 children and adults nationally since we were founded, but also in Union County, where we have a very strong program as well. So it would be a great benefit to us, and I think to Summit, to the entire country.
Thank you very much. Come on up, Bart.
Bart Sheehan from Dempsey, Dempsey &amp; Sheehan, Attorney for Family Promise. I'd like to offer one point of clarification to Councilwoman Fox's presentation, that is that the application for the use variance has been transmitted to the board, to the Department of Community Services, who has received it pending adoption of this resolution, and it will be activated tomorrow for preparation and presentation at November 4 meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Anyone have anything else to further discuss? Mike?
I'm very happy that this outcome has come to pass, and I think Klaus has been very modest about what Family Promise does. It's an incredible organization, and as he mentioned, it's, it truly encompasses vast swaths of the country. How, how many states are you in now, Klaus?
In 43 states.
That's amazing, and to think it all started here in Summit. So I, I think, to get poetic, you know, that, that building that they're in can, in one way, represent Summit. It's an old building, it housed, I think it was, was fire trucks in there at one state?
City Hall.
City Hall, so you can say that represents Summit. But the organization that's in the building, Family Promise, represents Summit in a different way, and that giving spirit, that ability to give for others, the community aspect of it, and I think it's a fitting, certainly, a, a great transaction and a fitting, and to, hopefully, will be a long relationship that you guys will use that building and prosper there. So, thank you for your, all the things that you do.
Very well said, Mike. Yes, absolutely.
There is one additional clarification, that the contract of sale contains an additional contingency, and that is that the facade of the existing structure, including the doors, the windows, and every aspect of it, remain exactly as it is, without repair or replacement or alteration, without the express approval of the governing body of the city.
Right.
And that's built into the contract.
And I think this is a very important point, because this goes back to the presentation we saw very early in the entire evening, which was dealing with the master plan process, and the historic preservation aspect of making sure that we preserve our cultural heritage. And as Councilman Turnin listed, of the importance of historically this building for us, it is, but the facade is the critical element of it. It gives it character, it gives it a sense, and we have pictures in this building of that building, so we know where we've come from. It's always important to know where you, where we've come from in order to know where you're going. So thank you for that clarification and the importance of having this kind of building in our town. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Capitol Projects, Resolution Number Three, 6684. This resolution authorizes financial support for the installation of the bike shelter at the train station. Previously, the city entered into an agreement with the New Jersey Bike Walk Coalition to install and maintain the bike shelter. The coalition is raising funds for the shelter, which is estimated to cost $60,000 to install. At this time, the Capitol Projects and Community Services Committee is proposing to contribute $10,000 of funds from the Department of Community Services Open Spaces account towards the installation of this facility. The coalition has indicated that several larger sponsors have shown a willingness to support this project if the city is also contributing. The city has a need for secure bicycle parking and is actively promoting the use of alternative modes of transportation, also in the, in the 2016 master plan revision. So, payment would not be required until the cost has been fully received through pledges and before the award of a contract. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? My recollection is that I think Mike, myself, and Nora are the only three members up here that remember when the New Jersey Bike Walk Coalition actually came to council back in 2016, when I, when Nora and I were first elected, probably the first month or second month when we were here, and they made this presentation, and we were like, wow, this is a great idea. But three years later, we're still getting there, inching towards. Part of it has been, and it's no fault by them, it has been working with New Jersey Transit and getting the agreement with New Jersey Transit. No fault by the city, no fault by anybody else. New Jersey Transit is difficult, as we all understand, believe you, me, when we commute on it, we understand it well. So, but I, I favor this because we're moving one step again, as with the sidewalks, we need alternative modes of transport because our roads are clogged with cars. We need to have people, and people will actually use this. At that point in time, I remember Councilman Rubino had suggested that maybe there's ways of advertising. I would still like people to think about that and try to figure out if that's a way of getting some revenue and maybe offset some of the costs that the city putting in. Okay, any, Mike?
Yeah, no, I share Council President's little frustration with the length of the journey. It's taken a long time. It sounds like a great idea at the time. I feel a little bit like this is a tiny bit of a bait and switch, because part of the presentation was, this is going to be great, we're going to raise the money for it, it's not going to cost the city anything, we just want your support, and now it's going to cost us a little bit of money. So, that's a little disappointing, but, that being said, when you go down there, I used to ride my bike to the train station, and it would, I'd chain it up to the fence, and I know that wasn't the right thing to do, but I did it anyways. Be a great place to be able to park, and we need one. We do need one there. So I, I do support this. I just would hope, though, that we're not going to have someone come back in three months and say, well, we need you to kick in some more money.
Well, at that time, I think we will.
I would strongly encourage this council to make a statement that, go and raise the rest of the money, please.
I think that the intent of this is to be, sort of, to show that we are serious about this, so other donors can do the same.
I, I agree, but, but I agree with, with what Mike just said, because they did make this big presentation, and one of the big hooks was, we're paying for all of it, and, you know, I think we, by negotiating and having countless phone calls with New Jersey Transit, have, have indicated that we're very serious about this. So, they really shouldn't need our money to know how serious we are. But, that said, I think it makes sense that council should approve it, because we do need this, and, you know, it's, it's not, they're not asking for half, but still.
Right. I mean, I, I completely agree with what Nora and Mike said, because we all sat here, we listened to it, and I think they also gave us a design for a very nice looking building. I'm hoping that actually that's what it turns out to be, because that, that was, you know, that was part of the selling of how attractive it would be to entice people to come and bike, and put like expensive bikes and hang them and so forth and all of that stuff. So, let's see how, how this turns out, but every little journey takes a little step here and there, and we'll see where we end up, so. Any further comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Capitol Projects, Resolution Number Four, 6726. This resolution authorizes awarding a contract for on-call snow and ice removal services on city properties, particularly the parking lots and parking decks, for calendar years 2020 and 2021. We'll be awarding the contract to SNL Contractors. The current contract expires at the end of 2019, and SNL, we had two bids, SNL was the lower bid, and it's the same amount as our current contract. Funding will be certified against the appropriate snow accounts and should not exceed $85,000 each year. I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, Capitol Projects, Resolution Number Five, 6727. This resolution authorizes bid re-advertising for the 2020 and 21 on-call snow and ice removal services for walks and open spaces. No bids were received for this project on September 24, so the city seeks to re-advertise the project. Bids will be due on October 29. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? My, my only question is, I assume in previous years, we've gotten bids for this work, right?
We got one bid, is that correct? Paul?
Have we not gotten bids for this type of work?
We actually did not receive any bids over the years, so what we do is, in, in the case of where we don't receive bids, we go out to bid again, and after the second attempt, we're able to negotiate with a contractor.
Oh, I see.
So the last, the last year, we had to negotiate with a contractor, they never submitted any bids.
Interesting, interesting, okay. Is what it is. Any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Capitol Projects, Resolution Number Six, 6737. This resolution authorizes change order number one and final for Laurel Avenue and Larned Road Improvement Project, and this decreases the contract amount by $29,567.56, and that's a 9% decrease in the contract amount. The project included the reconstruction of drainage inlets, repair of curbing, and installation of new curbing, and this also improved the drainage on Laurel Avenue that we've been hearing about, some issues from residents. So those issues should be addressed. The reduction in price was in part due to the reduction in the amount of asphalt use and also the reuse of some of the granite block curbing. And at the same time, additional sidewalks were installed to reduce hazards and improve the walkability to Brayton School. So I commend the Engineering Division on their work in bringing this project down in price and adding extra sidewalks in the process. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any, any comments or questions from members of council?
Isn't this the job that we, last week, we got an additional billing from Union County for the?
No, that was Locust.
That was Locust, sorry.
Yeah, this is Larned and Laurel, it's all else.
It's all, it's triple L, right?
Yep. Yeah, okay.
Any comments or questions from, I'm sorry, members of the public? Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Capital Projects, Seven, 6718. This resolution authorizes change order two for community center renovation project in the amount of $1,020. As the project was being closed, closed out, the city received an additional bill from Potter Architects for work completed on this project. During the construction, it was discovered that the entire exterior wall of the Guida Gym was held up by the windows and doors and was not attached to the structural columns. Obviously, that was not ideal, and so we had to engage Potter's structural subconsultant to do some work beyond the original contractor's scope. And that's something that was discovered when they opened the walls up, so it's not something we could have known about. So, this will finalize the contract with Potter Architects, including all change orders, and it's for a total, so it's an increase of $1,020, but the total contract price was five, now is $535,675. I move? I move this resolution.
Second.
And we still need to go through the punch list, yes, for the building?
That's a question for Aaron.
Aaron, do we still need to go through the punch list for the building?
Yes, there's still. Thank you, Council President. There's still punch list items, and then just doing the final payment for the contractor itself, so, which we're negotiating right now.
When do we think this is all going to be closed?
I'll say by the end of the year. We had a meeting scheduled last week, but they haven't done enough of the punch list to actually sit down and hammer out the final change order. So we're not at a stalemate, but we're getting where we need to be.
Any other questions, comments? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Capital Projects Eight, six, seven, oh, four. This resolution authorizes the execution of a whole harmless agreement with Union County for the use of its leaf composting facility. Although the city has the ability to process leaves at our transfer station facility, the Division of Public Works would like to explore the possibility of reducing costs for labor and fuel by disposing leaves from the portion of the city closest to the county facility. There is no cost to the city by agreeing to use the county's facility unless material is actually brought there. DPW will perform an evaluation to determine whether the county facility can assist the city in improving efficiency and generating cost savings before any decision is made as to where the leaves will be disposed of. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Last one, Capital Project Nine, six, seven, four, three. Pursuant to our discussion in closed session, this resolution appoints Ayman Mala as alternate number three on the Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. Ayman is an engineer who will bring valuable, who will be a valuable addition to the board. We thank him for his willingness to serve, and I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
A consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Items, well, within the discussion items, is there any new council member comments or If not, I.
I just had one. I guess it might be more of a request than anything else. I like, I know most council people attended one of the workshops for the proposed ordinances on straws and bags and styrofoam. I thought, I was happy that there were a few people there, but it wasn't a ton of people. And I know that many people, particularly businesses, have businesses to run, and they have a lot going on. They may not be aware that these things are going on. I am concerned, just very non-scientifically, having talked to two different businesses in the downtown, they had no idea that these things are being proposed.
So let me just address that, Mike, if I could. So just so you know, so I know that, I'll speak for myself, and then I'll also speak for Marjorie, and she'll correct me if I get this wrong. I went to the last SDI meeting, and I talked to the SDI board, went through each one of these resolutions. I am planning on going to the stakeholders' meeting that SDI is having on the 22nd, and I will address it there. I know that Marjorie and Karen Rayhoff, where the Chair of the Recycling Advisory Committee has had multiple meetings, I believe, with Nancy Adams, maybe at least one you've had, right?
We've talked about this for several months now.
Yeah.
So, Council President, I get all that. I get SDI has been involved, and I'm not saying that we haven't had a lot of outreach to SDI. But SDI doesn't always communicate, I'm going to be honest, there's a lot of businesses in the downtown that never go to an SDI meeting, never read the SDI memos that go out.
But they did get an email from SDI.
They did, SDI emailed for this.
They don't necessarily read them. They're all the time.
All the time. I'm just saying, my suggestion, and I'm not belittling what SDI does, but people have businesses. We, every council person on this dais has talked to residents and say, oh, you know, this is changing. I have no idea. Most people don't tune into these things until the 11th hour at the, you know, when it's about to happen, or maybe not until after it's happened, like, oh, my goodness, what just happened? I'm just suggesting that perhaps we need to make more of an effort outside of SDI to make sure these businesses are aware. And like I said, two businesses, no idea. And they have things to do. And I don't know what the right process would be. I'm not, you know, when we do a variance, a house has a variance, there's a mailing that goes out. This is going to affect the way a lot of businesses do business, whether you're for it or against it. That's not, it's going to affect them. And I just think that it is incumbent that these businesses don't wake up one morning and this is passed and have no idea that this is going on.
It's a fair comment. What I would say is that we can only say that maybe we can work more, or the folks who are really involved, you know, the CAP Committee, the Recycling Advisory Committee can work with the city's Communications Department to be, try to reach out to people. I'm sure that we have, well, I'm not sure what we have, but maybe we have mailing lists and we have.
We have already sent through that mailing list. I mean, we have really tried to get outreach wherever we can. It's on the city's website. Amy Karen sent out an email to her entire distribution list. It was in the TAP. It's, you know, we've communicated in every way that we can. You know, the only way short of this would be to go to every single store, and I think that's really, that becomes somewhat onerous. I mean, the Recycling Advisory Committee did that for the Skip the Straw program, and we've also reached out to all the businesses that we've made contact with through Skip the Straw. So that doesn't cover everything, but there.
That's a lot of the food establishments.
That's all the food establishments. So every place we have an email, we've sent an email or contacted.
You know, I think when they did the Skip the Straw, and they worked really hard to go around to all the restaurants and tell them about it, but that was a program that was a voluntary program. You can skip the straw if you want, you can be involved. We are now ostensibly enacting in three ordinances that are requirements and that there are fines, $100, $200, $300 fines if they don't adhere to the ordinance. Now, granted, there's a six-month period of time that, you know, everybody will get used to it, and it won't be enacted, it won't be enforced for six months. I don't think there's, people don't, we all know it, people don't read their emails all the time. And so we're not saying this is a voluntary program. It's six months, and it affects these businesses. These business people don't come to meetings because they're too busy running their individual businesses. They, it doesn't matter what we've done. I'm telling you, my, may I please finish? My personal opinion is that there's just almost not enough we can do.
Well, I would say, first of all, that even if they can't come to a meeting, they also have the opportunity to send comments, and some have sent comments to DCS. I mean, they can certainly send comments to all of us on the dais, and I've received comments. So it's not that it is impossible to get this out there, but, you know, again, when the Recycling Advisory Committee went and talked to all of the businesses, in large part, they found that they were unable to get a hold of the people who were in charge of those businesses. You know, they would speak to someone and ask, could, you know, could the manager call me back? That didn't happen. You know, there is almost no way to do this, where you can actually talk to every business owner. We really have made, I think, a lot of effort to do this. We were holding four meetings. It's, you know, it's not through lack of outreach on our part.
Can I just make, I'll make this following observation, right? And I made this observation, and I don't think anybody was critical of my making this observation at the time, to the residents from Ashwood Court when they came here. And they said, we didn't know that our street was in, you know, in the fair share housing plan, that you would have the exit onto Ashwood Court. And as those of you who don't know, I mean, everybody knows probably that I have been basically sympathetic to a lot of what their arguments and things were, you know? But one of the things that I made the point here, and I would make the same point to businesses, you have a major investment in this town, you should know what the city council is doing. You shouldn't be, I am so busy that I can't possibly know what the governing body of my town that I have decided to invest so much money and time in. We can make all the efforts. I don't disagree with trying to make more efforts. We can try to make more efforts. But democracy is a participatory sport. Other people get involved. If you decide that you want to sit on the sidelines and then say, well, you know, you didn't come to me specifically, well, I'm sorry, we cannot reach out to 22,000 residents. I'm sure residents are all impacted. We cannot go door-to-door with every single thing. Tonight, we passed a sidewalk master plan. We had discussions about this back in the springtime. We talked about it, you know, during that time, we talked, as we said, with the PTOs, but we'd made a decision after that. We do this all the time. There's plenty of ordinances and regulations. We'll pass a liquor ordinance. This is the idea. The liquor ordinance changes has an impact. We didn't go to every single liquor store. We didn't say, hey, listen, you know, now we're going to allow liquor stores instead of being 1,500 feet away from you, we're going to allow it for 300 feet away from you. We cannot have different standards for different ordinances. I'm afraid if we start doing that, then it seems as if we are deciding which ones are more important than some other ones. Yes, this has an impact, but other ones have impacts on other people. And you can't go in picking winners and losers, as some people, you know, refer to as saying, okay, well, this one, okay, it affects those businesses, so I must go ahead and try to make sure that they're okay with it. No. I mean, this is, I've been here long enough to recognize that people always say afterwards, I wish I knew that you guys were doing this. We can make so much, but I don't disagree that we need to do more of an effort. But it's this far and no farther, in my opinion. Mike?
I just would have to disagree around, some ordinances do impact people much more than others. They just do. These three ordinance are going to change the way food services business do their business. They may have to change their staffing around these. It's a big deal. Some people say, oh, not a big deal, oh, you know, just substitute one for the other. I'm just saying, this is a big deal.
This is what.
And may I finish, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm just saying that I agree with you on other things, or that about, we can't, we can't guarantee that everybody opens their mail or does what they do. But when we do something that there's a variance going on that will affect a homeowner, they get a letter in the mail. That's different than getting an email. It just is. I, my, you want to see my email? I have 6,000 unopened emails in my email box. Mostly, email is spam. You can't expect people, oh, you got an email. And to Councilwoman Fox's point, yeah, you go and someone knocks on the door and you get the clerk there who's not the owner. Well, then you should, we should check off the box and say, we got to go back and get the owner. If we're really making an effort to go talk to people, if not, then we're just doing a check-the-box exercise. So I'm just saying, some things are different, and I just disagree that it's everything's the same. They're not. They're just not. And we need to make more of an effort. That's my point.
Can I just say this, just one point before? I think it is wrong to refer to this as a check-the-box exercise. There are people here, not myself, but there are others, both on the dais as well as other people in this community, volunteers, who have spent countless hours, okay, trying to get this right. And the idea that they're simply checking the box is, I find, slightly offensive, okay? These people do not need to do this. They don't need to go walking door-to-door. They have gone and sent letters, they have met with people, they have talked about it, they have done what they can do. Those people are doing the best they can. As I said, the Department of Community, the Communications Department, if there's a way to reach out, sending out mail, people take mail. I take every single day, I get plenty of junk mail. I don't even open letters that I get. I just take them and I put it in the recycling, okay? So what are you going to do with a person like me? Okay, I don't look at my emails, I throw my mail out, I'll take this, I'll put it in the mailbox. What are we supposed to do? Businesses should, as residents should, be aware of the community they live in. This is a democracy. This requires citizen participation of every level. And if people refuse to exercise their rights, then yes, they can come here and petition us and tell us how wrong, and we're giving them six months to adjust. And there is actually, in fact, we got comments, and there's a variance process that is put in to this ordinance now that says basically, hey, listen, you store owner, if you think you're going to have a really hard time, which, by the way, most other communities, only last week, Chatham Township passed this without doing any of this kind of extra effort that we're going through. We're not alone in this. Paramus, do you think Paramus, New Jersey, when they passed it with 700 stores at least, went to every single store and chain and went, hey, guys, if I don't get the manager at Starbucks, let me make sure I'll come back and back and back to get them? No, they went ahead and did it. But we have now a variance process that says, hey, you store owner, you restaurateur, if you, for some reason, got these things beforehand, this is a hardship for you, we will work with you. We have gone step and step beyond what other places have done. And then to say that we have not done enough and that people are not doing enough, I think is wrong. Right.
One quick comment. So I think, I think that when we're looking at the way that we operate as a council, there's a built-in buffer zone between when we introduce something and when we actually vote on something. That's meant, that's built in to allow for public participation, so that's great. We do, however, for other things, go above and beyond to try to make sure that people are involved in this process. This is one example. The capital budget workshop is another example. The general budget workshop is another example. But everybody's right, there is inconsistency in the way that we do that for different things. So I don't know what committee that goes through, maybe it's the Administrative Policy Committee, could decide that this many number of, you know, public meetings, or this email distribution list, or this mail distribution list should receive things on a regular basis based on some criteria. I think, moving forward, we just want to have a sort of standardized procedure for saying, yes, we're trying to be proactive, but also, people need to pay attention, and that's the way that we can, you know, get as much input as possible before making decisions that affect the daily lives of people and the daily operations of business. So that's all of that.
I understand where Councilman Fartan's coming from, but I strongly disagree because what he's proposing is something that's going to make it impossible for us to govern. And I think, you know, we have a process. We introduce ordinances, we have agendas posted online, we, you know, we introduce ordinances and then we wait another, you know, before having a hearing. We have public hearings, we have the opportunity to comment. We have a public process. To introduce, you know, to every new ordinance or every new resolution, that we have to go through some other process, we will then not be able to accomplish anything in my, to my mind. I think we ought to be using the, you know, I think we really should be sticking to the procedure we have with the understanding that sometimes there's something extraordinary where we do want to reach out a little more. But I don't think that we should make it a policy to do this in every case.
So tomorrow morning, I'll be in the office early, and I'll talk with Amy Karen's. And we'll reach out to SDI and see if they can make another attempt at talking with merchants in the downtown. They also have a list of all the merchants throughout the city because they had to do that for when they were selling the gift cards, so that, and that's citywide. I don't know what kind of outreach they've done. I don't know if they can tell when emails have been opened. You know, I'll just talk with them and see what else we can do to sort of get the information out that way. And then, as you said, the stakeholders' meeting is the 22nd, I believe.
22nd at 5:30 PM.
Right, right, right.
At the wine.
Wine list. And I'll be there as well.
No, Karen Rayhoff will too.
I'm going to see if we can get other people to, you know, maybe it's a matter of, between the time, we make an effort, between the time we introduce the ordinances and then vote upon them, but there's a period of time there, you know, people will walk around and stop in some of these stores, so.
Madam Mayor, so you mentioned that they have a mailing list for non-downtown businesses.
Right.
I mean, this is going to affect all these other ones.
Right.
That they will reach out to them?
I will ask them, because I know that they had to reach out to all of those businesses when they were putting through the gift card program, because, you know, those gift cards work for every store in town and restaurant. So, I know they have that list, and, and I'll double-check. I'm assuming they sent out this information to everyone?
They did.
Okay, but I'll double-check it, and, you know, some of the larger ones they can, you know, talk to, or maybe, maybe you, you talk to one of the most responsible store owners that they would know, say, on that, the little strip mall across the street from Selgin, Selgin West, and see if one of those people will go to their, how long could it take them to go to their neighbors, if there's six or seven stores, and see if we can, you know, get sort of word of mouth and, and out that way.
And, and my understanding, and you can clarify this with Amy tomorrow, my understanding is that she did use a larger list, because I asked, really asked her specifically, because my concern was, actually, it wasn't so much the downtown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's actually the stores that are outside the downtown, which, because the downtown has this mechanism of an organization while those don't. And those were the ones I was more concerned about, being sure that they were informed. My understanding from her, and you can confirm it, is that they were reached out to. I, again, I do not disagree that any and all efforts that we can make to get people to know about it, but I don't think it's, I don't think people should be left feeling as if they have failed because somebody says, I didn't hear about it.
No, no, I...
Even if they've tried, I think, I think we should give credit to people who volunteer a lot of time and effort in this, to make sure that they're recognized properly for what they're trying to do here.
True, but the reality is, I mean, I was with the owner of a very large bakery in town on Saturday night, who had no idea about this. Now, that said, this person was very happy about the concept, and, and had already started thinking about it, and, you know, whatever. So, so that's the thing. And then, was she, he had no problem with what we were going to try to accomplish, but he had not heard about it. And I said, you got an email? He goes, ugh, email. You know, so that is what it is.
Well, I understand, I understand. Okay. Can we, any further discussion on this topic? I think we've, we've beaten this horse now. Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you for adjourn.